Well, what I'll do is I'm going to call the meeting to order. And then what we can do is do a roll call. And then after that, if Commissioner Perusch joins us, she can join us in closed session and we'll make a note of that in the record if that happens. So I'm going to call to order the Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order for September 14th, 2020. We're going to begin with a roll call. I'll start with Commissioner Labasser.
Here.
Mr. Macy.
Here.
Mr. Dubbott.
Here.
Mr. Douglas.
Here.
And I vote yes as well. I understand we're waiting on perhaps Ms. Halas to join as well so we can go into closed session here. So we'll also give that another minute or two.
Mr. Mayor, I see that Commissioner Perusch has entered the room.
Okay, Commissioner Perusch. Christopher Perusch, roll call.
I'm here. I apologize. I had trouble connecting tonight.
No worries. So I'm going to hold off until I see Ms. Halas on as well. I think Mr. Gillum, it would be really hard to proceed further without having the city clerk present to record the proceedings.
If you're relying upon Mr. Brake or me to keep the minutes, you're asking for trouble.
I have no comment on that. I fall into that same category.
Mr. Gillum and Mr. Brake, those look like the new digs you're in.
That is true. We're into the new office.
Yes. Broadcasting live, Row 3, South Troy Street. Some of us still have boxes they have left to be unpacked too, so.
Yeah, I was looking at that. I mean, I was only casually making observances of your new offices to ensure that they're in nice and tidy order. Mr. Gillum, I do notice a few boxes back there.
I had fewer boxes to start with. Fairness to Mr. Gillum.
Well, if I didn't like Mr. Brake so much, I'd say something about working so much I didn't have time to unpack.
All right. Oh, we'll just give it a minute here.
Mr. Mayor, I did get ahold of Melanie and she's had a computer issue and she's working it out. She should be on shortly.
Okay, we'll be patient. She's a very important part of this, these proceedings, these meetings. So we'll... Any one of us could be having a technical issue at any time, just the challenges of the time. But patience will get us through just about everything.
Mayor Fournier?
Yes, Ms. Winger.
No, that, this is Commissioner Perusch.
Oh, Commissioner Perusch. Sorry, I did it completely by audio.
That's okay. When I tried connecting tonight, the system prompted me to do an update before I would connect. And I did that three times before. I said no for the third time and it finally let me connect to the meeting. So Ms. Halas might be having some of the same difficulties. For whatever reason, the Zoom platform is wanting to update people's connected systems. And if that's the case, it's going to take her a while to power. It took me about five minutes to get them to understand that, no, I'm not going to do an update right now.
Interesting, okay.
I see her, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, no need to apologize, Ms. Halas. We're happy to have you finally on board now. So we've gone through the roll call and now we're going to proceed with an adjournment to closed session to discuss attorney-client privileged information and attorney-client privileged information as well as pending litigation. So if there's a motion to go into closed session, someone can make it at this time.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Macy, seconded by Commissioner Douglas. We're going to do a roll call vote on this one. Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Perusch?
Yes.
Mr. Labasser?
Yes.
Mr. Dubbott?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We'll proceed into closed session. We'll begin dialogue as soon as we get the all-clear from Ms. Winger.
Mayor Fournier, we are live again on WROK when you are ready.
Thank you, Ms. Winger. For those of you just joining, we kicked off our meeting at 6:30 this evening and we adjourned to go into closed session to discuss attorney-client privileged information, pending litigation. We've since returned and we're resuming our public meeting. And just quickly, I'm going to do another roll call for those that are here right now as we return from our closed session. I'll begin with Commissioner Perusch.
Here.
Commissioner Labasser?
Here.
Commissioner Macy?
Here.
Commissioner Dubbott?
Here.
Mr. Douglas?
Here.
And Mayor Mike Fournier present. We had originally scheduled an invocation to be given by Commissioner Dubbott, but this evening I'm going to take the opportunity to read an invocation. "On August 20th of this year, we received absolutely shocking and terrible and sad news about the passing of Commissioner Gibbs. Commissioner Gibbs was only 48 years old. Her life was cut way too short. Commissioner Gibbs joined the commission just over two years ago. And I think for many people that aren't in public service, they don't understand fully the scrutiny, the criticism for every decision that's made, and the fact that you're putting yourself out there to be judged by your friends, family, and neighbors. Commissioner Gibbs understood this. Commissioner Gibbs had the courage to put herself out there and help move forward our city and our community to the better place that it is today. She was passionate about her service and she was passionate about the community that she served. Her presence will absolutely be missed on our city commission. Our hearts are broken for her and for her family and we hope that she rests in peace and we ask that God bless her soul. I ask now that we give a moment of silence for our falling colleague, Commissioner Gibbs." Thank you. Shortly after the Pledge of Allegiance, we will be sharing some of our memories and comments specific to Commissioner Gibbs by the commission. So I ask for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you can as we begin the Pledge of Allegiance. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." I know a number of us have spent many hours over the last few years that Commissioner Gibbs had served on this body in closed session, strategic planning sessions. We've seen her outside the commission chambers, in the streets, at the farmer's market. And we wanted to just take a little bit of time today as commissioners to share some of our thoughts and feelings and memories of Commissioner Gibbs. Does anyone wish to start? Commissioner Macy?
Thank you for that invocation, Mayor. That was nice. So when I think about Commissioner Gibbs, think about Kim, I think about what a great listener she was and how she really loved talking to people. She was absolutely a people person. And she was really, really good at making people feel heard. Like when you were talking to her, she was engaged and she wanted to problem-solve with you and work through whatever you were talking about. And we saw that at the farmer's market where she loved to be at the farmer's market and she talked to people and met lots of people there. She just brought energy to what she did. And I mean, even on Facebook, she was energetic and was a bright spot every day on my Facebook feed. She had beautiful pictures of her garden that she would post, of her travels. She was an international traveler and she really enjoyed that and would talk about her trips with all of us who had traveled either to those places or hoped to someday travel there. And she would post things that made her laugh. And she had this great, I guess, tradition of posting things that made her happy. So she would post something that made her happy that day and say, like, 100 days, Kim is happy. And it was, it was just joy. So she brought that little piece of happiness from her life and she was always wanting to share that with other people. That's what I think about when I think about Kim.
Thank you, Commissioner Macy. Commissioner Dubbott?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you for your invocation. That was very nice. So Commissioner Gibbs and I, you know, we definitely differed on issues, but we had a lot in common. As people, had a passion for our community and we love Royal Oak. We were both drawn to serve and we both, actually all of us, you know, answered the call to public office. And that's no small thing. It's a heavy responsibility, making decisions on behalf of not just your neighbors, but future generations. And there's a weight to it. And while we had debates that, you know, sometimes were heated about issues or differing visions, you know, that's what this process is. And, you know, she brought her vision, her values to the table in every step of the way. Commissioner Gibbs' passion for the city and her desire to serve and how much she cared for others was readily apparent. And it was unquestionable. And that's how I believe she'll be remembered by our residents and that's certainly how I will remember her.
Mr. Douglas?
Thank you, Mayor. As Commissioner Macy said, Kim had a love of travel and that was something she and I shared. I remember one of the last times we were together at the table, there was a break in the action and somebody came up and reminded us that our mics were hot and that everybody could hear us as we compared notes on trips and tour guides. She had fairly recently gone solo to Spain. She was a fearless traveler and I admired her for that. I mean, I don't know that I would have the courage to visit a foreign country by myself. So Kim was a sojourner and she was also a person of great faith. And we learned from the Bible that we are all sojourners, looking for our homeland, for our native place. Thus, we read in Hebrews, "But as it is, they desire a better country; that is a heavenly one. Therefore, God is not ashamed to be called their God, for he has prepared a city for them." Kim served here because she wanted a better city, a beautiful city. And now she lives in that perfect city God has created for her and we rejoice at her journey's end.
Very nice, Commissioner Douglas. Thank you. Commissioner Labasser?
Kim always had a positive attitude, always found the best in people, always had an encouraging word for people. And she always had the best of intentions. If there was someone who had some concern, that needed some help, she was there to offer it. She was very quick to volunteer. She was very quick to lend an ear, lend a hand to try to bring about a resolution for someone, you know, to help their situation. And as been mentioned, you know, she always posted so many positive things, always had some positive things to say, whether it's sharing something from her garden or an uplifting thought. And those are some of the things I'm going to miss from Kim. She was a good friend. She was a very dedicated servant to the people, really wanted to do something positive to help the people of Royal Oak, and I think she did that.
Thank you, Commissioner Labasser. Commissioner Perusch?
I'm quite positive that I'm the one at the table who has had most one-on-one experience with commissioners and mayors over the Royal Oak history, more than any of the rest of you. But I think about of all of the other city commissioners that I've known and the other mayors that I've known, there are very, very few that had the sense of empathy for residents in the community that Kim had. The only one that I can think of that is comparable is someone who's no longer with us and that was former Mayor Barbara Holman. Whenever a citizen would raise an issue with her individually or a group would raise an issue with her that was their concern, no one listened harder, no one was dedicated more energy to helping them solve that problem or get a solution or find a way out of the issue than Mayor Holman did. And Commissioner Gibbs reminds me so much of that, that deep, profound empathy for people and their problems and willingness to listen and willingness to work very hard to make sure that there is some kind of a solution. And that's very rare in public officials. We are all fairly egotistical. We want what we want. We want what our position is. Sometimes we're not very good listeners. I mean, I'm certainly that way in many instances. But it takes a very, very empathetic person to be able to be not only a public official and advance the broader public agenda, but also have the deep empathy with individuals and individual groups to be willing to listen to them and to work for a solution. And that's what I'll remember about Kim, is that deep sense of empathy. And that's something that I'm going to try to emulate going forward. We can all improve and I think we can all take little bits and pieces from Kim's personality and the way she handled this office and work it into our own operations and make our own performance better. And that's what I'm going to take away from this. I think we are all blessed to have had the chance to serve with her and we're going to miss her. And she leaves a very, very strong legacy in the community.
Commissioner Perusch? I mean, I share all your sentiments and, you know, one of the things I think of is her patience as well. I think about the times before a closed session and Randy and I would be throwing out dad jokes left and right. And while most of these jokes that Randy and I tell are met with eye rolls and head turns, Commissioner Gibbs, I would say, more often than not, would laugh at our jokes and at least have a sense of humor about how both Commissioner Labasser and I, you know, contend to find a pun in just about every situation. And, you know, I think that's one thing about Commissioner Gibbs that I personally really enjoy. Talking to her stuff, I mean, everyone thinks that we just talk about city business all the time and that's not the case. I can tell you on countless occasions outside of City Hall, my kids and I and my wife, we would be walking down the street and we'd run into Commissioner Gibbs and it was always a welcomed and friendly smile. We'd joke around, talk about things going on in the community and, you know, share tips about, you know, whether it be food or, you know, what might be going on that we could share with each other to have a great Saturday. I saw her on the campaign trail a number of times. At one point, we thought we were stalking each other. It seemed that we were hitting up the same neighborhoods, knocking doors. But everything was friendly, you know, smiling, laughing, joking around with each other and, you know, sharing a few experiences we had going door-to-door. I think Kim, people, she just didn't get elected by accident. And I think it's, for those, some of the sentiments that were shared tonight, she was a listener and she would talk to people and she did very good one-on-one with people. And going door-to-door, I think she was able to, you know, really listen to a number of the residents. And I think, you know, people forget that you just don't, you know, jump onto the stage here and serve your community. There's a lot of work. And so Kim was constantly knocking doors and talking to the community and sharing her vision and hearing the concerns of citizens. So she will be missed. I think that our commission chambers won't be as bright as they were before her passing. And, you know, it's still hard to process, frankly speaking. I know it's been a number of weeks and it's just, it's going to be difficult for some time moving forward. Personally, on behalf of myself and my family, we're very grateful for her service to our community. And our hearts and prayers and thoughts go out to her family. And like Commissioner Douglas said, we know she's in the perfect city right now and she's looking down at us. And I know she hopes that we continue to move forward, doing the work, having the debates and, you know, coming to the conclusions that move our city forward. So Kim, you're going to be missed. All right, I don't know if there's anybody else that wishes to share anything else. If not, we're going to move to public comment. I know at public comment, I believe there's some people that called in to also share their thoughts and memories about Commissioner Gibbs. So Ms. Winger?
Yes, Mayor Fournier, we have 26 public comments this evening and I will play those for you now.
Thank you, Ms. Winger.
Pamela Lindell. "I'm deeply saddened at the untimely loss of our city commissioner, Kim Gibbs. Kim had a heart of gold. She was the top advocate for our farmer's market. From what Kim was at the market most weekends, if she wasn't shopping, she was helping out any vendor that was short-staffed. Her bright smile will be missed by many. I wish this wasn't the predicament we find ourselves in, but here we are. I am sympathetic to the grieving family and friends and proudly encouraged by Kim's mother to make this request of you. As you are aware, I was the top vote-getter after the incumbents in the 2019 commission election. The residents of Royal Oak obviously believe in me. I feel it is only right to replace Kim's vacancy with me, Pamela Lindell, the female who receives the next most votes of competence from the residents. I appreciate your serious consideration in filling this critical void until the next election. Thank you. Have a good night."
My name is Ann Halleck and my address is 210 North Center. I just wanted to comment about the decision you have facing you this evening. Since the passing of Commissioner Gibbs, you have to appoint someone as commissioner to fill her term. This situation is unfortunate. My sincere condolences to Commissioner Gibbs' family and friends. I urge you to appoint Pamela Lindell as commissioner. She was the third highest vote-getter in the last election. It only makes sense to stand by the voter's decision and appointment of Lindell. It was the voter's next choice and those votes should be recognized. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Devor Bulik and I've been calling to leave a comment regarding item number 18, to keep 56th Street permanently closed. I'm the owner of Capitole Marquis and I also built patio, which makes a really, really loud difference regarding revenue in my business. I think that keep 56th Street permanently closed is a wonderful idea and I totally support having that closed permanently. Thank you so much. If you need any other question or you can always reach me on 248-331-3667. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
I have a public comment to the Royal Oak City Commission. So regarding Kim Gibbs and her untimely death and how she was treated earlier this year by the Royal Oak City Commission, City Commission majority, I'm appalled at how you treated her and mistreated her, abused her and in just the low-grade approach you took to her in that meeting where you censored her. It's an absolute outrage who you people are, what you are, what you think of yourselves. I wish the rest of the people at Royal Oak could wake up and vote every one of you out of office. Every one of you need to go and you don't need to come back. You're as low-down as they get. And that's exactly what I think of you and I know a whole lot more people think that and worse of you. It's appalling. Kim was as good old final lady as we've had on the Royal Oak City Commission. For you to mistreat her the way you did is unconscionable. I don't even think you people can be proud of yourself for that. Thank you.
Hi, this is Mick McGuire. I just wanted to say about Kim that she was a very good counsel woman. Anytime I needed any help with anything, she would respond right away and take care of it and quite a help. And I'm really sad about her passing. Okay. Thank you, Mick McGuire.
I'm Dr. Wallace Anderson, 404 Mountford Boulevard. In looking over tonight's agenda, I was surprised to see the last item, discussion of process to fill city commission vacancies. What surprised me was that there is apparently no formal process. Yet vacancies occur often enough that bylaws or the commission's constitution should have a systematic approach that values democratic process. While developing a process for filling vacancies now, I encourage you to formalize a policy that incorporates public input much of an election day. Recognizing that commissioners are elected by the public, the first approach really should be to look at the candidates in the most recent election and offer a position to the unsuccessful candidate with the highest number of votes. A second approach might be to solicit nominations or self-nominations from the public and establish a separate committee to evaluate and recommend, but one that is not composed of current commission members. Having the commissioners themselves nominate and select people really ignores the democratic process of elections and I encourage you to avoid this. In the last election, if I recall correctly, Pamela Lindell was the highest vote-getter after the people that were elected. She's a lifelong Royal Oak resident and over the years has been very active in the community. I'm confident she'd be a positive addition to the commission and placing her to sadly fill the vacancy left by Kim Gibbs would appropriately recognize public input without requiring special election or other time-consuming review processes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathy Arnold. I am calling to speak to two agenda items. Number seven, memory of Kim Gibbs. Kim was a kind woman who only ever wanted to make Royal Oak a better city. Kim was a kind woman who only ever wanted to make Royal Oak a better place. She always showed compassion and interest in the residents concerned and we appreciated that very much. I've seen the memorial garden fundraiser and think it's a beautiful tribute. I hope to see the location approved. The second item is number 19. Also very pleased to see this as an open discussion and I hope the end result can be a unanimous decision. A fair and equitable solution to consider would be to seat the next highest vote getter from last year's election to fill this seat. This option also honors the resident voter's input. Appreciate hearing discussion on the matter. Thank you.
Good evening. This is Robin Salieri, the Director of Operations at O'Toole's in Royal Oak. The reason for our call today is to express the, the closure for Fifth Avenue Street, uh, for the duration of the winter. Uh, we have invested a lot of money in our deck out front. It has increased our business, which has been able to keep our doors open. We were able to pull our employees off of unemployment and keep them employed. Uh, most of them are students and residents of Royal Oak and they're able to work and feed their families and pay their bills. So we plead for the, uh, Fifth Avenue Street to remain closed so that we can keep our decks out there and use it more of a social area, uh, for, uh, people walking by and, um, to enjoy drinks and eating and the fresh air. Uh, we are looking into tenting the area or some sort of covering. We've also looked into the igloo, which are really neat lit, light-up individual tenting areas. Um, we're doing different, a lot of different options. Uh, but we just ask that you consider keeping Fifth Avenue Street closed. Uh, and then we can remain with the fellow businesses on the street, uh, to keep our businesses open. Thank you so much. Have a wonderful day. Bye-bye.
Hello, Karen. This is Shop 233 East Webster Road. I wish to extend my heartfelt and deepest condolences to Commissioner Gibbs' family and friends. Her untimely death is a great tragedy for all Royal Oakers. I also wish to address the important topic on the city commission agenda even, this evening. Item 19, discussion of process to fill the city commission vacancies, Commissioner Gibbs' seats. The Royal Oak Commissioners' oath of office pledges to uphold nonpartisan politics for the welfare of the citizens of Royal Oak. Ten months ago, Ms. Pamela Lindell won 5,793 citizens' votes, just trailing behind Commissioner Lavasser's vote. Ms. Lindell's votes speak the choices of the people of Royal Oak. It would denote a lack of transparency without Royal Oak voters' input, especially so if any other person were to fulfill Commissioner Gibbs' position on the commission. I believe Pamela Lindell to be fair, a fair and just person. The 5,793 votes for her to be the most likely suitable candidate for the commission and for the citizens of Royal Oak. I respectfully request Ms. Pamela Lindell replace the honored seat of Commissioner Gibbs on the Royal Oak City Commission for the welfare of our citizens and city. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Ann E. Egan, uh, Royal Oak resident. Uh, I would very much like to see Pamela Lindell fill the open seat as city commissioner. Pam has a vested interest in Royal Oak residents and would be an excellent community leader. She is hardworking, dedicated and friendly. Not a typical politician, but a neighbor. She gets what we want and needs for, and our needs for Royal Oak. Pam Lindell deserves a seat at the table, working for the city that we love and live in. Thank you.
Yes, uh, this is Joe Ullman, uh, owner of Detroit Eatery. Um, just want to let you guys know that, uh, by doing, uh, uh, this block off on, um, the street is helping our business, business a lot lately. Uh, I feel like everyone's distanced, everyone's walking now. Before Thursday, Friday and Saturday, we just had a bunch of cars, Ubers, and it's just was a big traffic jam. Now it's just, everything is spreading out. I feel like there's more people coming, more people like, uh, what they see on Fifth Avenue. Uh, I, I personally think it's like something similar to campus marches, but on a smaller scale. Uh, maybe some trees or something, you know, to make it, uh, look a little better. But so far, people love it. People lay, love to come, uh, on Fifth Avenue just to see what's going on. Uh, business-wise for me, it's been very, very good. I know, um, pretty sure for Fifth and O'Toole's, they're doing also, uh, awesome. Same thing with, uh, Devor and, uh, Mahukabar. So, uh, if you have any questions, my phone number is 313-377-3003. Um, one more thing also, I, we do close at three, four o'clock in the morning. So, uh, we try to clean up everything as possible, even if it's down the street or whatever we need to do. I try my best to clean around just to make it look a little bit nicer. Um, you know, if there's anything else that you guys need, like I said, give me a call and we'll try to work with everyone. Thank you. Again, bye.
From Royal Oak, the people of Royal Oak voted for our commissioners and I believe we should have the next person in line to replace Commissioner Gibbs. I believe it is, uh, Pamela Lindell and, um, I think she would be a good choice, seeing that she got the next, um, highest votes at the last election. This way, the people are, are picking our next commissioner. Also, um, the new park committee haven't done their homework. They announced they were going to put trees all around the Veterans Monument for shade and so on. Just a few years ago, the DDA paid to have the trees removed from around the monument because of the birds. The birds take over and make a huge mess of the monument. Our veterans don't deserve this. Please reconsider putting trees, please reconsider putting the trees around the monument. Beaumont Hospital could become a disaster. The CEO and COO want to sell Beaumont to a Chicago, um, hospital company. This company is only for profit. They are not even rated. We will lose the great ratings we have, but most importantly, we will lose the great doctors and nurses and the, the good supplies. Please write or phone our Attorney General at 517-373-1110 and let her know we do not want it sold. We have a great hospital and don't want to lose it. We could have a really big mess and not have the high-quality hospital, um, that we have. Thank you.
My name is Dominique King. I live in Sylvan in Royal Oak. And my comment is about, um, Commissioner Kim Gibbs and her vacancy. I remember Commissioner Kim Gibbs as the dedicated public servant who tried to maintain a connection with residents by listening to them and by keeping them on via social media and in person by volunteering at or proponing events like Farmer's Market Days. But she also was very active with her church, which was where I met her several years ago. I've lived in Royal Oak, I voted in Royal Oak for decades. I grew up here. I went to school here and I bought my own home here more than 30 years ago. But I'd never seen a display of hatred such as the one allowed at the seven-hour commission session where the majority, the mayor and the commission majority sought to censure Gibbs. I truly felt that the ulterior motive of the session was to hector her out of office. I was horrified and ashamed of my city commission and we all see how that turned out. I felt, and I said then, that if the commission majority managed to replace Gibbs, that they should have selected the next highest vote getter from among the candidates who ran but didn't win in 2019. I still feel the same way today. Please honor your residents' wishes as expressed in 2019 by appointing Pamela Lindell to the commission, Commissioner Gibbs' vacancy. And please honor Commissioner Gibbs' memory as a constituent-centered public servant by appointing Lindell as someone I feel will serve our city the same way. Thank you.
I'd like to express that, uh, Kim Gibbs will be sorely missed. She was a big supporter of the farmer's market and always willing to meet with both, uh, farmers and, and and a lot of the seniors at the Barton Towers to rectify their issues. It's, uh, it's tragic that she had to go through that censure, um, over basically almost nothing compared to what other else is going on. And with, uh, with, with a rally in front of the, of the post office where, uh, social distancing was, was certainly not maintained. And, and one of the, one of the biggest proponents of her censorship was wearing a mask with the, with the mask below his nose. So I don't understand why that was such a big deal. In regards to her replacement, uh, we had an election last November. Pamela Lindell is available. I do not see any reason why we should have a, uh, appointments committee put together to find somebody to replace, to replace Kim. Uh, we had, we had an election again. We had a, a rather close election for that matter, uh, from third to, to fourth. Uh, there's no reason that Pamela Lindell should not be, should not be seated and, uh, and ta, and take out the rest of the term. And, and then next, uh, next November, we can, we can go through this again. But putting somebody in there at this point who has not been, uh, vetted by the public, who has not been, uh, gone through the election process would be a travesty. Thank you.
Hi, this is Gail McGuire and I'm making this call with great sadness. Um, Commissioner Gibbs was a wonderful commissioner who cared deeply about our community and the people here. Kim was always one of the first people to respond back to me on neighborhood issues. She will be greatly missed. Also, I love the idea of the Memorial Garden and her name. Thank you. Bye-bye.
My name is Tom Halleck. I live at 210 North Center. This is in regards to the commission vacancy due to the unfortunate death of Commissioner Kim Gibbs. Uh, the voters spoke last November. The first two, uh, highest vote getter were seated. The proper thing to do is to seat the mixed highest vote getter, which would be Pamela Lindell. Uh, anything else would be highly inappropriate, uh, reach around for partisan purposes. Uh, the voters have spoken. Uh, please respect their wishes. Thank you.
This is Royal Oak. I'd like to see protocol followed. The next highest vote getter, which would be Pamela Lindell, be appointed, uh, to the commission. It's the, uh, fair thing to do and I think what the people want. Thank you.
My name is Paul Joseph. I'm almost a 20-year tax-paying resident of Royal Oak and I'm calling in regards to agenda item number 19 tonight, the commission vacancy. Kim Gibbs' position should be filled by the next highest vote count from the previous election. That would put Pamela Lindell, who has expressed interest into the position. Mayor Fournier has said in the past, public opinion does not matter. Well, it does to me and many others. Pam is the person for the position. Kim Gibbs should be remembered via a memorial tree, um, funded by the city of Royal Oak in a city park or other location. After all, the commission did have a impact on her passing. Uh, thank you for your time.
I am a Royal Oak resident and I am calling in regards to the new commissioner position. There has been a lot of community support for Pamela Lindell. She is a very hard-working Royal Oak resident and we look forward to her dedicated efforts as she fills the vacant seat for city commissioner. Thank you so much. Bye.
Laura Harrison, resident of Royal Oak since 1973. I nominate Pamela Lindell as a new member of the city commission. During my tenure as a commissioner, there were two resignations. We all agreed the fourth vote getter from the previous election was the best way to go. Pam is a longtime resident and has volunteered and served on several of the city boards. My second comment is regarding the Veterans Memorial. I have looked at the plan for the location of the Veterans Memorial. The green belt has been eliminated and there's not enough room for attendees to the three yearly services. Also, the trees attack, uh, attract birds, which means constant cleaning of the monuments. Who's going to take care of that? Thank you.
Regarding memories of Commissioner Gibbs, I remember Kim being ready to help whenever called upon. She was an advocate for seniors, the farmer's market and the protection of neighborhoods, to name just a few. My last email to everyone on this commission resulted in only one response and that was from Kim. Many people have expressed she was the only person who stepped up to help when they had issues with the city. She will be missed both by her friends and as a city commissioner. Regarding agenda item number 19, filling the vacancy. The last time there was a city commission vacancy, Commissioner Douglas stated, "Resumes should be requested and reviewed." That you owe it to the public to demonstrate that measure of awareness and transparency. And Commissioner Peruk stated, "You owe it to the public to at least open it up so they feel like they have some participation in the process." Those comments were ignored and you voted for your only nominee. No open process. This time, that should change. However, the public has already had an opportunity to express who they would like. Only 10 months ago, when they voted, there is nothing in the charter that states you must pick a former commissioner and nothing prohibits you from picking the next highest vote getter from our November 2019 election. That is, unless you wish to ignore the vote of the people. And lastly, during this pandemic, I'm appalled at the lack of your concern for Royal Oak seniors, the most vulnerable segment of our city. While other cities were making regular phone calls, using their senior bus service to pick up and deliver groceries and prescriptions to the homebound, continuing their mail programs, holding Zoom meetings, et cetera, you failed to even override the city manager's decision to classify senior meetings as non-essential. Those Zoom meetings could have and should have been a chance to brainstorm ideas for our seniors. I've stated repeatedly to both you and the Parks and Rec and Senior Advisory Board and Commissioner Douglas is well-aware, the majority of seniors are not on the groups on Facebook and many are not even on the internet. You must reach out to them and I don't mean passing it off to the few neighborhood associations or some landmine robo-calls, many of which didn't even connect. You may not be the demographic you wish to serve, but you are obligated to do so. Your mission statement is to provide a safe and healthy community. In my opinion, you failed our seniors.
This is Sarah Salter. I would like to think that you were aware that, uh, Kim cared deeply for the residents of Royal Oak despite your not having considered her opinions and tried to serve the residents well without creating a larger debt. You have the numbers from the last election. Pamela Lindell received most, almost the same number of votes as Commissioner Lavasser. In a democracy, those with the most votes get the job. I didn't receive any notice that this discussion would be taking place. Residents should have prior notice in order to have input. Thank you.
My name is John Galacca. I just wanted to start with a few words about the tragic loss of Kim Gibbs. We'll miss Kim for the person that she was, as well as what she represented to the city. Her friendliness and good-heartedness will be missed, as well as her cheeriness. Though she often didn't have things easy, but things made even harder by actions of the city council. the city council. Regarding the process for replacing Kim on the council, I and many others feel that it should go to the next highest vote getter in the election. We got it just 10 months ago. In this case, Pamela Lindell, followed closely by Tom Hallock, next in line, for a number of reasons. Pamela Lindell represents the voice of the voters in a city which often supposedly listens to residents' input but doesn't let them actually vote on important matters. Pam represents the same diversity of views on the city council that Kim did, making her a valid replacement. The city requires the political diversity represented by Pam. It's evident that this city is composed of residents of differing viewpoints, as we saw in the election last year, in which the mayor himself won by just over 50%, despite having a campaign budget 10 times that of his opponent. Listen to the actual votes of the residents this time and have Pamela Lindell as Kim's replacement. Thank you.
3021 Helen Court. I'm addressing two topics. The first is concerning Kim Gibbs. She was always a friendly face at the farmer's market, taking time to stop and talk to people and the citizens and address their concerns, a person who wanted the best for the citizens of Royal Oak. Secondly, Kim Gibbs's position should be filled by the candidate, the next highest of the votes after the top three. That candidate is Pamela Lindell. Pam has been involved in Royal Oak actively and would add balance to the city commission. Generally, in situations where a vacancy occurs during a term, this is the matter in which the vacancy is filled. Speaking to Pam, I send the message that the city commission values the voters of Royal Oak. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Suzanne Chambers and I'm calling regarding the beloved Kim Gibbs's passing and needing to have that seat filled. I'm certainly hoping that the great consideration would be given to the vote count that Pamela Lindell received. She was very close to Andy's actual count. So, I would certainly think that the residents of Royal Oak, the taxpaying residents, that you are supposed to be representing our wishes and I would certainly think that those voters that would have liked to have had Ms. Lindell be seated at the table would be taken in consideration greatly. So, I thank you and I look forward to a woman replacing a woman's seat and I look forward to your decision-making. Thank you. Goodbye now.
617 Dewey Street. Caring and paying tribute to the late Commissioner Kim Gibbs tonight will never be offset by from your resolute shaming and obvious vile degradation of Kim's right to exercise her First Amendment rights on April 15th at Operation Gridlock. Started her demise. You know that. You can live with that. Tonight, your agenda items in her memory are a little too late, as they say. Your concerted cohesive effort by your known cohorts, an initial phone call to Jeff Payne from David Woodward, your engagement of Tommy Reagan of the R O D C, as well as significant other actions that led to the public release of all Kim's contact information and the ridicule of her from people across the nation initiated and started with the team of five sitting at that table tonight. The bullying beatdown of one of the most transparent, genuinely concerned, openly caring, and gentle individuals to be elected to the Royal Oak City Commission. She voted and spoke the same way. She supported trees in Royal Oak, unlike some of you who publicly support them and then chop down 100-year-old trees. She now supported, but she frequents the Royal Oak Farmer's Market weekly for years, working hard to ensure that the city commission didn't do anything to cause its demise. You all talk about it and did exactly the opposite. You can say what you want, but there's half the amount of farmers there that there were two years ago. You all know what you've done, what you've been able to accomplish for yourself with your words, your actions, and your behind-the-scenes collective efforts. You're all real proud of yourselves. You can live with it.
Mayor Fournier, members of the city commission, that concludes the public comment for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Swinger, and thank you for all those who actually shared their memories and sentiments about Commissioner Gibbs. I'm sure that was very emotional and very welcome by her mother and her family to hear those who actually shared the kind words. So, thank you very much for taking time out of your day today to do that. This brings us to the working body of our agenda tonight, which item number nine is the approval of the agenda. Your motion to approve the agenda. I see Commissioner Perush.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second by Commissioner Douglas. Any discussion on the approval of the agenda? With none, I'll call for a roll call vote. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubac?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Levaser?
Yes.
Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
And I vote yes. This brings us to item number 10, which is the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda this evening?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Levaser, which items would you like to pull off the consent agenda?
Items F and G.
F and G. Okay. Anybody else? Commissioner Dubac?
Item M2.
Okay, M2. Okay, anybody else? All right. So, the consent agenda now consists of city commission meeting minutes from the 27th of July, August 10, 2020, claims August 14th, August 28th, September 8th, September 11th, 2020, approval of purchase order, approval of renewal of equiture service and maintenance agreement, approval of purchased patrol rifles, proclamation designating 2020 as National Recovery Month, proclamation designating September 20th National Suicide Prevention Month, proclamation designating September 21 to 27, 2020, as National Rail Safety Week, approval of the 2020 Transportation Asset Management Plan, approval of the ordinance to prohibit inversion therapy, second reading, and to receive and file the non-action item, which is the August 2020 Investment Report. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Macy is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubac. Any discussion on the consent agenda as presented? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. We'll begin with Commissioner Perush.
Yes.
Commissioner Levaser?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubac?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, we'll start with item F. Commissioner Levaser.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The reason I pulled this off, I note that we had, we took bids for a, I believe it was compressor over at the senior center. A bid that is being recommended by staff is just over $47,000. I do note that there were three lower bids, with the lowest bid being approximately $7,000 less than the one that's being recommended by staff. I understand that we have worked with this particular company before, but I'm not convinced yet that that by itself is enough to warrant going $7,000 or the lowest bid. I just wanted to get some feedback, perspective from staff as to why it's so important to stick with this particular vendor.
Okay. There's Mr. Filipski. Nice beard, by the way. Oh, we might not be able to hear you, Mr. Filipski. I hope it's not...
Sorry about that.
Oh, there we go.
Well, thank you. In regards to that vendor, I mean, we do find a lot of value in the fact that they had a long history of having worked on that system there. And so, it seemed only right in this case. I tend to be suspicious always of the very low bid. And so, that would bring us up to the second bid, which wasn't far off of this group. So, you know, for the value, we do see a lot of value in that and having that experience in our building and that was the primary driver in that. John, I don't know if you have anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah, I actually was the company that installed the condenser that's currently in the senior center. So, they were initial installers. They've worked on repairs or Band-Aid fixes to keep the air conditioning going at the senior center. So, the familiarity with the whole center and how it's laid out, as well as the equipment that's already currently there and the equipment that is needed to be sufficient for that building also played a key role in that.
If I may continue, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Gentlemen, during this process, did we seek out information pertaining to the qualifications of the various applicants who submitted their bids to us?
Yeah, that was part of the application process. And I can say that the other bidders by, you know, on paper, were not unqualified.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any motions? Mr. Macy?
All right, I tend to agree with Mr. Filipski that the low bid and the high bid, we often tend to ignore those when we're looking at them. And when you do that, these bids are all really, really close to each other. And to me, our city staff have presented a good case as to why this is the contractor that they feel is best qualified and most comfortable with doing this work. So, I'll move to approval.
Motion by Commissioner Macy is there a second? Second by Commissioner Perush. Discussion? I'll just say, I appreciate the team bidding it out and I appreciate the reasoning. You know, we're talking, not to trivialize $7,000, but when you talk about the limited time that our staff has, I mean, to go back and really put a lot of effort into trying to bring the lower one up and deep dive and spend countless hours. We're working with someone we've worked with before. They were real close to the second bidder. And I agree with Commissioner Macy. Often, when you have really high ones and really low ones, somebody misunderstood something in the bid documents. And while is it this were a $70,000 difference or a $700,000 difference, of course, we'd go back and really sit down and put the effort into that. But I think we're working with a known commodity right now. The important thing is, is that they did the work. They did it right before. And we know they can do it and they're familiar. And then we get here in the senior center, I mean, when air conditioning and condensers and all of these things are important for the air that we breathe and the quality of health for our seniors, I think it's important that we go with who we think is going to do the job best. So, I'll be supporting the motion. All right, I don't see any other comments. I'll call for the vote. We'll start with Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Commissioner Dubac?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Levaser?
No.
Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Item G, approval of street lighting inventory and data reconciliation service proposal. Commissioner Levaser.
Thank you. The reason I pulled this off, this is a fairly significant expenditure. And so, I wanted to get a clear understanding of what the potential benefit, particularly short-term benefit, is for us. In this instance, you know, I'm seeing an estimate of $46,200. And I can understand and appreciate that there may be some benefit to having a thorough inventory and perhaps some even potential savings involved in some erroneous billing. But I'm not sure I'm seeing $46,000 worth of benefit and I wanted to get some perspective from staff otherwise.
Sure. I mean, I guess that would be the immediate benefit potentially in the savings from the data reconciliation portion of this. But that's really hard to tell because we have a second problem where we really don't have a good count of these lights or their locations precisely. So, it's hard to even estimate what a potential savings is. And to me, that's the first problem. We have a lot of assets we have to manage besides streetlights and streets and sewers. And some of those, the data we have for them are not in the best shape. So, I think operationally, it's a huge value, both immediately but also longer term, to have and work with good information from which we can maintain maintenance records. And then also potentially quite easily correlate this into a streetlight outage reporting app, which we do get a lot of calls for that. And people say, "Well, it's this light that's, you know, a couple houses down from this address. It's on this side of the street." And it sometimes makes it difficult to locate and maintain. So, that's another benefit that we see from this. And so, to me, if you look at the staff that's involved to try to do this in-house, to even go out and count, aside from the fact that we'd be losing their attention on a lot of more important things, it would take longer to collect this information and it would start approaching those costs, really. So, when you factor that, I know, I guess I see it as a really moderate expense for a lot of value.
Reading the memo indicates that there's roughly 3,500 streetlights throughout the city and DTE owns approximately 75%. Does that mean that we would own perhaps the other 25%?
That's correct.
All right. So, basically, we're guesstimating here that we are somewhere around ownership of 875 streetlights. And there was a reference in the memo to perhaps there being some billing issues. Is that in case some of the streetlights that we think we own are actually owned by DTE or someone else? Or what would be a scenario in which there could be some savings?
Yeah, that's one of them where it's just the ownership is incorrect on it. Other ones that are owned by DTE, we will maintain those. Other ones that are owned by DTE, they maintain. So, it's sorting out which ones are which. And there's very specific billing tiers. It's actually quite complicated, the way they bill for municipal lighting. But we would be able to have all of that information in great detail when we sit down to reconcile that. And so, even the ones that don't count as ours, there's the potential for savings in those as well.
What is the, what type of numbers discrepancies would we have to look for before we potentially would break even, say, over, say, three or four years?
Well, I guess that depends on the scale of the discrepancies. And so, I don't know. I wouldn't want to venture to guess that, Commissioner.
Could the numbers go the other way where we find out that we actually have to pay more than what we currently pay?
Potentially. But even in that case, that would be a situation where if we don't find it at some point, DTE would and have a history of back billing for those as well. So, we wouldn't be getting away with anything if we didn't find these things out.
Okay, Commissioner Levaser is muted. Anybody else wish to have any questions for Mr. Filipski? Comments? Any motions? Commissioner Perush?
Mr. Filipski, can you remind us again where the money from this project would come from? Not from the general fund, I don't believe?
No, this was actually listed in the capital improvement plan. It wasn't funded yet because we were sort of determining when we were going to actually do this project. But the funding would come from the major roads fund.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion then to approve this recommendation.
Motion by Commissioner Perush. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Dubac. Discussion? Mr. Douglas? Mr. Douglas.
So the city should make decisions based on data. And in order to make those decisions, you have to have baseline information in order to be able to evaluate where you can find savings or improvements in efficiency. And this is probably not the first time we are going to see a project where staff comes to us and says, in order to improve service in a given area, we first have to establish what our current level of is. And I, we've installed a GPS system that is very robust, that has the capacity to do this and that will layer this information on top of other information in the city. I think this is a valuable project. The money is not coming out of the general fund, it's coming out of the traffic fund, which is appropriate, and I support the motion.
Anybody else? I'll just add, there's also a cost to doing things right. I mean, we get people calling about a streetlight and they go to their city to get something fixed for safety reasons or for annoyance reasons if it's flashing and causing great consternation among a neighboring house. And we don't know where things are. I don't know. I feel like, you know, in our community, people pay, you know, harder money out of their tax dollars or through the road fund, through their gasoline tax, whatever it may be. And we, I think we owe it to them to make sure we understand where our assets are, how they're working for us, and what we can do to improve them. And I realize there's a cost here, but there's always a cost to doing the job right. And I think in this particular case, the upside is much more the potential than any downside. And I think it's important that we, that we move forward based on the recommendation. So I'll be supporting it. All right, I'm going to call for the vote. I'll start with Commissioner Perush. Commissioner Vassar?
No.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubak?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, that brings us to the last item on the consent agenda that was pulled off for discussion, which is item M2. Commissioner Dubak?
Thanks, Mayor. Just wanted to make, just wanted to bring attention to this item. You know, several residents have reached out, you know, they had flooding in this last incident. I know the report kind of goes over some of the information that we've all heard multiple times, that we're having more of these serious weather events. The system, working at peak functionality, is not able to absorb that much water in that small period of time, that deliberately hold the water in the streets to keep it out of people's basements. But in this kind of case, if so much water comes down in such a small period of time, it gets overwhelmed in some places. So what I really wanted to raise was, I know that we've taken the tax, given that upgrading the entire system costs, you know, billions with a B. We've taken the approach of trying to put more water back in the ground, you know, change our planting and zoning and our water billing we've talked about, right? Encouraging folks to have more permeable space to keep water out of the storm system and put it back in the ground where it belongs or hold it on site. So we've taken that environmental approach, but I'm wondering, are there any things, and I had one call specifically about this, that we can empower residents with how to protect their homes in a case where there is that backflow in the sewer systems? I remember a few years back, we had a conversation about residents privately installing backflow restrictors. And I can't remember how that went, or if that's a bad idea or a good idea. It was raised again by another resident. I did want to see if it was something we should informing people about as a reasonable option to keep this from happening? Or if people do it, does it then force more water into other people's properties? And I just wanted to flag that as something I would, I would like to learn more about. I know it's not in this report, but on top of what we're doing to upgrade infrastructure, to be more green and put water back in the ground, what can we do for residents other than telling them how to go about filing a claim after an incident like this? Is there other information we can provide them if they do want to take action on their property to try and, you know, up their defenses? So, Mr. Brake, is that something? I mean, I could put in, or if Ms. Donahue has anything off the top of her head, that'd be great.
I'm going to guess Mr. Brake would like me to take this one. Sure, okay. So yeah, you touched on some really good information there and appreciate the summary of that. Yeah, when it comes to individual homes, backflow preventers, or some people call them check valves, that's kind of the only thing you can do for your specific property. But we don't want to say like, that's going to fix it every single time. Sometimes those things fail. If the water pressure is high enough, even those might not do the trick and you might still have a basement backup. In general, this was brought up in our, when we did the sewer study back in 2014, and that was one of the recommendations from our consultant, had a big write-up about it, you know, what residents could do if they wanted to install it. At that time, the estimate was around $5,000 to do that on your own property. And we actually received an email today and somebody had gotten three quotes and all of them are still right around that ballpark of $5,000. So it's an investment, for sure, for somebody to do on their own property. But, you know, if you have a finished basement or bedroom down there, it might give you a lot more comfort moving forward. So that's one key thing. And then us as a city, you know, green infrastructure is still a goal of our city and something I really try to look to do more of whenever we have a construction project. Because like you said, billions with a B, that's not something that we can fix. We can't just upsize our sewer system. And I think a lot of residents think that we should be doing that. And we can't do that if the county doesn't first do that for us to dump into. And I really don't see that happening anytime in the near future. So our investment in green infrastructure and continuing to do that as a goal, I think is huge and something we should still keep pushing for as we plan projects for the future.
I'm with you. I think, yeah, the green infrastructure as opposed to putting more money into gray infrastructure, that in 20 years may also be being overwhelmed, depending on how things go. I think changing our behavior and how we build is the right approach. So on the, but the backflow restrictors, that I'm understanding is there's a cost there. Is that something that, is it the equipment or the install that's, that's the cost driver?
I'm not exactly sure how that breaks down. That cost would include labor and material to have the whole thing installed, but I'm not sure what the breakdown is there.
Well, and I guess I'll take the conversation offline because I'm not prepared to provide any further direction on it tonight. But I'm curious if it's something that we could explore as far as bulk buying backflow restrictors so at least residents can get them at cost. I don't know if that's feasible. Does each home and pipe system need its own unique type? I don't know enough about it to provide direction on it, but I'm wondering if maybe we can have a conversation about it in the coming weeks and see if it's something we could explore. So I'll shoot you an email.
Sounds good.
Okay. That is all. So with that, I'll move to, you know, accept the report.
Motion by Commissioner Dubak. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion. I see Commissioner Vassar.
Thank you. I know we all have the concern and desire to prevent flooding in our community. One thing that's troubled me a little bit during the development of this project was the inability to get what I thought were concrete numbers that would give me a sense of how significant of a difference something like this, this stormwater utility might have on the amount of water put into our system and how that may impact both a flooding situation as well as a billing situation for the treatment of the water. And, you know, as I like to say, I want to know, is it significant or is it a drop in the bucket? And the pun is kind of intended in that respect, but it's to make the point here. We just had a major storm a couple of weeks back, and I believe I read that there was something like 2.9 inches within an hour or something like that. I'm wondering, how many gallons of water would we have needed to avoid in order to avoid the flooding that we witnessed at the north end of the city? As well as comparing that to our projected savings of water going into our sewer system if the stormwater utility gets the benefits that we hope that it will? And really, the question is whether this is a system that's going to be effective or not effective. If it's effective, it's a lot easier to support. If it's not effective, then we need to be looking at other solutions as well, whether it's working as a, as a community with other communities toward ensuring that our residents don't have their homes flooded.
Do you want me to comment?
You can respond if you want, yeah. If you have.
Sure. So that's a real tricky question, and I'm not exactly sure how to answer with concrete numbers. This, these many gallons, this many dollars saved, especially when you're talking about hydraulics and hydrology, it depends where that water falls, when it falls, how your system gets inundated. And so that also, where your green infrastructure is then also plays a role in that. So I really can't give you a straight answer on that. I can say green infrastructure is effective 100%. You keep water out of the system, you're helping, whether it's a drop in the bucket or a few drops, or they continuously add, which really is our goal. We're not going to solve the problem with one green infrastructure project. It's, this is like a 20, 25-year thing where we just keep building up our volume. And Oakland County is really pushing hard for all our surrounding communities to do the same thing as well, particularly with developments that are over, I think, I think an acre at this point is what they're pushing for. So that we're not the only city doing it. You know, we get hit the hardest a lot because we're at the downstream end of the GWK system. So if other communities are helping keep some of that water out, that only helps us as well.
Ms. Donahue, theoretically, the way you're articulating it, one example would be is we could do everything possible. You could have a light rainfall, but all of our neighbors to the north of us or upstream had a tremendous rainfall and it fills up the sewers and there's no room for us to dump into the county sewer and we got a backup. So it's very much depends on the storm. It depends on, you know, a lot of factors. So it's hard to, I mean, I'll just argue, and what's, what's the prediction worth to some extent? I mean, to be a little facetious here because, I mean, our folks back in the 70s and 60s predicted something, you know, the 10-year storm. And now we've had 200-year events. So, you know, what do those models even look like in the future? We know they're not great. We know they're not going to get better if we continue to go along this path of climate change and we refuse to, you know, make changes, not just in our infrastructure, but the things that are causing climate change. We're going to continue to have these sort of impacts. And so I understand your answer to be, hey, it's complicated because there's a lot that goes into it and no storm is ever the same as any previous storm. Commissioner Perush?
Two things. When we were studying the stormwater utility as the task force a number of years ago now, when Don Johnson was still here, there were two incentives to taking that approach as opposed to the current approach. Number one, by transferring the cost of the stormwater away from the water bills based upon how much water you consume in your household, how many times you flush your toilets or how many times you run your washing machine, this absolutely has nothing at all to do with how much stormwater your property produces. Taking the calculation as to how much you pay for stormwater away from that old calculation, which we have now, to a new calculation based upon actually how much stormwater runs off of your property, creates an incentive for people to do mitigating efforts on their own property. Instead of having a huge impermeable concrete driveway installed, limiting the size or putting other types of driveway installments in place that would allow the water to permeate, and a whole lot of other options that are available to keep the stormwater on your property. That kind of incentive in the system is, goes a long way toward creating more green infrastructure in the community on private property, as well as the public things that we can do with public property. The second thing, the second advantage to doing it this way is that because the billing process is now based upon how much water you use on your property and not how much stormwater you generate and discharge, there are large parcels of property in the city that are commercial and industrial that use very, very, very little water. So the amount that they are charged for stormwater discharge is quite small. But on the other hand, their parking lot, their large paved parking lot is enormous and it discharges gallons, millions of gallons of stormwater into the system annually, which they don't equitably pay for because the billing system is based upon how much water they use and they don't use very much water. So there's a newer system, which is, which is a part of the stormwater utility billing system, would make that a lot more equitable. It would be based upon how much stormwater you actually discharge into the system and therefore giving you incentives to cut down, to cut that down as best you can, as opposed to throwing that burden on the rest of the ratepayers in the system who are not generating that much stormwater. And they're paying a portion or a share of those who are generating a lot of stormwater but are not paying for. So those are two of the significant advantages in terms of the billing system for the stormwater utility. It's going to be, as Holly said, a long time before, if we were to put it in place, we'd have any way of measuring how much stormwater we're actually keeping out of the system and how many floods and flooded basements we're actually preventing. But in terms of billing fairness, it's certainly a whole lot more equitable than the current system that we have in place.
Thank you, Commissioner Perush. Commissioner Macy?
Commissioner Perush just said it way more eloquently with more detail than I could, but I was going to say similar things, that the stormwater utility itself is a billing system. So in terms of how many gallons of water in the system is going to save the utility, zero. But it is, as Commissioner Perush said, it's the incentives that it creates, it's the way that it creates equity across the system. And an additional thing is that part of the, part of the money for the stormwater utility will be put aside for the green infrastructure that Ms. Donahue was talking about. And so allowing us to do more of those projects and to catch that water before it goes into the system. And that brings me to the question I originally had from Ms. Donahue, which was, so the backflow preventers sound fairly preferable to be expensive for many people. And you talked about this green infrastructure for the city and how we should be focusing on that. Are any of these things, like including what Commissioner Perush talked about, but also, you know, like rain gardens and rain barrels that people can do for their own homes, do those really have an impact? Like is, you know, I understand that if everyone did them in the whole city, then that would have an impact. But is it, is it worth recommending that to individual homeowners as a way to perhaps prevent this in their own basement?
It would be kind of a thing where you need most of the city to do something, you know, because most people can only take, what can they take out? You know, they need their driveway, they need their walkway, they enjoy their deck. Most people aren't going to want to get rid of those types of things and just have grass. They might. It might do well for their property, who knows? But when we're looking at green infrastructure, that, that actually is kind of the drop in the bucket compared to like a big project that we might do in a roadway that collects an entire drainage district of stormwater as opposed to, you know, like quarter of an acre or something.
Commissioner Dubak, did I see your hand?
Yeah, I think Commissioner Perush and Macy really covered it, but I think to Commissioner Vassar's question, which, you know, we've been having discussion for a little over a year, maybe more now, I think he's right in that, you know, no one's trying to build this as a silver bullet. We're establishing policy to change behavior and psychology over time to yield better results, not the day after we implement this or even the year after we implement this, but by over, you know, years and decades as people upgrade their properties, as new developers upgrade their, you know, build new or upgrade their existing properties, it has a radical effect on how people think about water runoff, because there's a financial incentive directly tied to it. So it's one tool that gets us to where we want to be in this reality where we recognize upsizing the existing system that we all inherited is not, it's not feasible at this point, but there are very feasible green infrastructure options, especially over time that we can implement. And there's value to that. And that's, that's good public policy. And I'm glad that we're talking about it, but I agree with Commissioner Vassar, like it's not a silver bullet and we're still working on to make sure that we're landing it the right way, which is why I haven't been done.
It's definitely not a silver bullet. And I think Mr. Brake and I had a conversation, we were talking, you know, quite a bit the day of the flood. He made a good statement and he said, you know, what I've seen in my experience, especially with, you know, sewers, I mean, this issue came to be over decades, if not over a century in our community, when you look at the age of some of our, you know, oldest sewer lines. And it's going to take us time, a long time to unwind it. And we're not going to be able to tear up 200 miles of road next year and replace it with, you know, 30-foot diameter pipes and then that connect to, you know, three-foot diameter pipes at the county. I mean, it just doesn't, you know, the physics don't work. So what can we do now? And this is what I think we've been talking about as a commission. We've taken some action by putting the green infrastructure in and doing things, and it's going to take time. But I think it's a balance of, you know, in the short term, what have we done and what are we doing, what can we do now? And then in the long run, how do we work with the other communities, which we have been in the county? Water Resources Commissioner did see meaningful progress that unfortunately with, you know, these big construction projects will take a while to plan. But, you know, there are some stopgaps we're going to look at and that Commissioner Dubak some stopgaps we're going to look at and that Commissioner Dubach has brought up with the the check valves and, you know, things of that nature. So we continue to have to push and be creative and lever our best ideas, but, you know, it took decades and I don't want to say it's going to take decades, but we're going to have to continue to do what we can do, grab the low hanging fruit and move forward with the things that are cost effective and can make a meaningful difference. I see Commissioner LaVassar.
Thank you. Couple of things. Number one, I recognize that this is not going to be an instantaneous thing, that this this plan is designed to impact infrastructure over a significant period of time. So so basically my questions, they're geared toward, if we have the desired results over, say, 10 to 20 years, what impact will that have on the being the solution that we that we need for our stormwater issues? Is it a 1%? Is it 2%? Is it 50%? And I know that may be hard to quantify, but I really want to understand that. And I'm not expecting Ms. Donahue to have instantaneous answers there, but but these are questions I posed at previous work sessions on this topic, questions I still feel that I've gotten answers to. So that's where I'm coming from there. Second, I know there's been some discussion about hardware at individual homes to prevent backflow, which which I don't know that that really resolves the issue for the community. It may, with good fortune, resolve it for the individual, but that water still has to go somewhere, whether it's into our streets or into our neighbors' homes to fill their basements even deeper than they would otherwise. So so I'm looking for a a bigger resolution to this. I really believe it's a regional issue as opposed to just a Royal Oak issue, and I'd really like some feedback from the, you know, from the decision makers at the regional level as to the steps that are being taken to address this issue.
Hey, you're right about the backflows. The example I give is you get one of those kids sprinklers and you cover a few of the holes, more water comes out of the remaining holes, you know? So it's not a permanent solution by any means, you know, but it's a it's a shock for some property owners that may feel they're more at risk. But you're you're right on that. And I think, you know, we don't have all the data, right? We do know that green infrastructure helps. And we also know if we do nothing, nothing changes. And so the status quo, you know, in my opinion, is unacceptable. So, you know, it's kind of a, at least we know with certainty, if we do nothing, we get the same result. But if we do make green infrastructure changes, we know it will be better to the degree it will be better. I mean, that's a complicated question or complicated answer. Good points, Commissioner LaVassar. Anybody else on this topic? City Manager Brake.
Thank you, Mayor. Here's a couple of takeaways on the report that I put together and where we move from here. First off is that we focus on bringing back the Stormwater Management ordinance. And there are two contingencies that we are waiting to bring to resolution before we can move forward and create a utility. Secondly, I think as a newcomer to the organization in the community, start to engage in that dialogue in a regional basis, and I would concur with the previous comments of of working with the county, our neighbors and alike, and what can we do and cooperatively go about tackling this larger issue. But already there's some internal staff discussion of what are some small measures that people can take and better inform individuals if they do want to pursue the backflow preventors. So there's a task list, and when it's appropriate, that we will bring that back for additional discussion and deliberation.
Thank you, Mr. Brake. All right. I believe there's a motion on the table, right? Yeah, Commissioner Dubach moved it. Okay. So without any other discussion, I'll call for the vote. Start with Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Dubach?
Yes.
Ms. Maisy?
Yes.
Ms. LaVassar?
Yes.
Ms. Perusch?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And thank you, Ms. Donahue, for your expertise, as as usual. You always showcase your great expertise. And I know Ms. Donahue is an advocate and they, and a lot of other communities look to her as a leader when it comes to topics of green infrastructure, because I've been there firsthand, listening to what they think about some of the things you've done here in our city, and especially through her leadership personally. So we're grateful to have her on board. All right. That brings us to the next agenda item, which is, let me read it exactly here. I'm working on two pieces of technology because I have a monitor down. This is with our establishment. Well, no, this piece of technology is not working. One second. Ms. Lyons-Bricker with the approval of an ordinance to establish Royal Oak Environmental Advisory Board, first reading. Ms. Lyons-Bricker on?
Nope, I will, I'll be taking it for Julie this evening.
Okay.
We worked on this one together. So, yeah, the item before you this evening is just a way to formalize the the Royal Oak Environmental Advisory Board within the code. It's back in 1990, they were actually incorrectly titled by way of a commission resolution, and they sort of let it go, but since then, their scope has really increased. In 2008, it changed to Environmental Advisory Committee. I'm sorry, that was the the error in changing the name. But since then, they they expanded in scope quite a bit about what they do and provide to the city. And as sustainability and environmental issues are becoming kind of of greater concern, their work is ever that much more important. And recently also, as a result of the lead situation around the state with water, water services, they are have been assigned to act as the Water System Advisory Council, which is required by state. So really, what this agenda item is just to formalize their work, strengthen their voice. I think this would potentially assist in in grant funding and really just demonstrate even further the city's commitment to these sorts of issues. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
This is for Mr. Filipski. Commissioner Douglas.
Not so much a question, it's a comment. I'd like to see the ordinance, the ordinance currently says the Department of Public Service and Recreation Director or his or her designee shall serve as an ex officio non-voting member of the board. I'd like to see the city's Sustainability Director also added as a an ex officio non-voting member of the board. As it happens, our Sustainability Director, Ms. Lyons-Bricker, is right now an elected member of the Environmental Advisory Board. Moving her into a staff position would still bring her expertise and knowledge to the table while freeing up a position for another member of the community, resident of the community to serve. And I recommend this, and and all of our staff people report to Mr. Brake, and so I, if he has any objections to it, he can raise a hand, or if Mr. Filipski feels that way. I did run this by Ms. Lyons-Bricker and the current Chair of the Board, Amanda Herzog, and they both liked the idea.
Some point, Commissioner Douglas. Any thoughts, Mr. Filipski or Mr. Brake? Any objection to adding that language?
I think Julie would be a great help. She is a great help.
I agree. Okay. So that would look excellent in the form of a motion. We'll go with Commissioner Kyle Dubach.
I'll start us with a motion. I'll move for approval with Commissioner Douglas's amendment.
Motion by Commissioner Dubach, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Perusch. Discussion. Commissioner Dubach.
So I did just want to note, so this has kind of been a long time coming, really establishing this board in a more formal way as as a key advisory body to help the city build out its environmental sustainability strategy. And I think it's relevant to our really previous conversation here. Item, let's see, section seven, paragraph B, it shall be the duty of the board to assist staff in developing and implementing the sustainability plan and associated action goals that serve to progress the strategy for supporting environmental sustainability efforts in Royal Oak. So I think in the vein of what Commissioner LaVassar's looking for, this body would actually help put those goals in place. You know, we set as a goal, then in the next five years, we want enough green infrastructure to capture the first one inch of rainwater, which is X number of gallons. And I would think that's, you know, really formalizing this and making that their direction and empowering the board to do that, I think they're gonna, they're gonna really help us, you know, up our game on environmental sustainability, because it's, it's an appointed body, but I mean, there's really, really good folks there with with hyper relevant expertise that want to put those expertise to use in the best interest of the city. So I'm really pleased to be seeing this.
Excellent points, Commissioner Dubach. Anybody else? All right. I'll call for the vote then. We'll start with Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Dubach?
Yes.
Maisy?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. LaVassar?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. This brings us to item 12, which is the approval to create a new payroll accountant position. Mr. Brake, is this you?
Yes, it is. Thank you, Mayor. So I'm presenting for the the commission's consideration of creating a new position that does not exist. We currently have a opening where the payroll function was handled by a part-time clerk. And what I'm suggesting out of what I've heard out of the budget deliberations and speaking with Director Dut, Julie Rudd, of adding increased accounting functions within the department. So really upgrading the position, and we could even call it a split level position, where it's a payroll administrator slash accountant. This would enable the individual focusing on non-payroll functions on those off weeks and adding a greater emphasis of what I would term a pre-audit. Payroll itself is a pretty simple function, but it's all the information that's put into the system that's rather complex. Of the 300 full-time positions that we have, we have 172 pay codes, we have 78 rate tables, and I could go on and on on the different nuances, not to mention that we are part of our, a good portion of our workforce is a 24/7 operation. Our overall personnel cost of payroll as well as benefits, it's, we're a $48 million in enterprise. Coming from the different organizations that I've worked for, the first thing that surprised me is having a part-time payroll clerk. And when this position became vacant, I take any vacancy as an opportunity to step back and look at how can we improve the functionality? Of course, I realize and I appreciate the sensitivity of increasing costs when we're looking at trying to bring about austerity of living within our means. My point of view on this is that it's important that we have accurate and complete information and that that pre-audit function that goes into preparing payroll is is of the utmost importance. So by having someone that can devote the time and energy, and this is not to cast any dispersions of how things have been handled in the past, I'm telling you from my professional expertise that we need to generate a greater amount of attention and to make sure that things are done correctly, so we're not having to repair costly mistakes. Fortunately, that hasn't happened, but it's a matter of what level of risk do we feel comfortable with? So the obvious question that'll come up, and I'll address that right now, is what is the cost of this position and how is this compared to what we are currently spending? The proposed position, which wages infringes, that we calculate out, runs about $86,600. The current part-time person that we have previously was budgeted at $30,100. As we went through the budget deliberations, with kind of the unknown and kind of the elephant in the room was, what is the impact from the state of Michigan as it relates to the state's revenue? What was approved by the commission did not include any statutory revenue sharing. The state, as of last week, conducted a consensus revenue estimate conference where they verified their their numbers. What the state is providing to us, and this includes statutory revenue sharing, is 5.7 million, whereas what we have budgeted is 4.988. So we are in a better position. We will likely talk about much more specifics. We hope that the next meeting in September 28th will be bringing some budget amendments and you can kind of take a deeper dive. Should we be holding off in this position and wait and see if we get better information? The answer is no. My recommendation is give us the authorization that we can begin the recruitment. If we end up bringing someone from outside of the organization, it'll take a minimum of four, excuse me, two to three months to recruit someone coming in. In that meantime, if there's other unanticipated costs or different estimates, then we can react to that. But what I'm submitting to you is to create this position that we can beef up the accounting function, that we can feel much more competent in what we estimate and what we record and any sort of errors that we can detect that that could exist in the financial system. So I present that for your consideration. This is a recommendation that that I initiated. So that's why I'm speaking to it and that Director Rudd, and happy to entertain any questions. And then gone through similar iterations working for different organizations. But bottom line is that I recommend the authorization to move forward on this position, and we will bring future budget adjustments to make up for that additional cost.
Mr. Perusch.
Um, Mr. Brake, in a lot of situations, the cost of an individual position or the cost of an individual program is a portion to the various funds that it touches or that it impacts or that it works with. Is this one of those positions that the cost of which is a portion to the general fund in some portion, and then also to the the water fund because there's water employees there, other funds that have employees? Or is the cost of this position solely the responsibility of the general fund?
Well, the the position would be paid out of the general fund. So you you bring up an interesting issue, and this is a conversation that I've had with Director Rudd, is to look at what's called a cost allocation. So essentially, your overhead costs are absorbed by the special revenue funds, enterprise funds, and and the like. So currently, the formula that is used would not include the additional cost. But I would say through an improved accounting system that we could much more accurately develop what our overhead costs are associated with that. So I would say within, I hope within another year or so, that we would have a better allocation method where we could recoup those costs from the non-general fund departments. But immediately making the investment, it would be incurred solely by the general fund. I hope I answered that that question.
Yes, you did.
Okay.
Ms. LaVassar?
The extra $700,000 from the state, is that restricted to any particular funds?
To the general fund. I don't think you can allocate it to any other fund.
Okay, but it would be to the general fund.
That is correct.
Okay. This position, has it already been vacated, or is it about to become vacated?
It's vacated currently.
And and how much notice did we receive and when did it become vacant?
As of less than two weeks ago, and that what customarily is a two-week notice. So we, last week was a pay period, so it was handled by another person within the finance department that was taken off of her duties and is filling in on a temporary basis to do payroll.
Right. Is this something that can be filled on a temporary basis with a temporary employee to basically continue the status quo, fill in the part-time position?
You could, I would not recommend it. Part of it is that to bring someone up to speed, and that's what I was articulating, that we have a complex system with the number of pay codes and different pay plans and setups and garnishments. and garnishments and tax withholdings, I could go on and on and on. So to, to bring someone in is to forego some costs and to buy us some time. I, I honestly, I, that's throwing good money after bad. So I, I just don't see that as a big use of resources. But, you know, if you tell me that we, we're not going to fill the full-time position, then we'll make do with it.
Any other questions for Mr. Brake? Commissioner Douglas?
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna approve, move approval of the resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas. Second by Commissioner Perush. Discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Brake came on the job in May and immediately dove into our budget considerations. He heard our conversations, our deep commitment to reducing spending in the general fund, at least until we saw how state funding panned out. I, knowing what we feel, I cannot imagine that he would make a recommendation like this lightly. There are other departments in the city vying to add staff to their department, and this is the one that he picked. And I'm, that makes it pretty clear to me that this is a top priority and a crucial item to make the city run better and to better serve our employees. I think it's the right thing to do.
Yeah, and I'll just add, the status quo right now, as far as, I mean, we had a part-time person doing it for a while, the person departed, and now you're left with a void of, of expertise that has to actually be covered by another person in-house due to all the complexities. And I think in these challenging times, especially financially, where we're gonna start to see a lot of gyrations, request a lot of financial reports and things of that nature from, you know, our finance department, this person would be charged with doing payroll, but also have some other responsibilities that I think will support our purposes moving forward as well. And since the budget issue has been, um, you know, we have a little bit more clarity and we understand the level of austerity we have to position ourselves with, I, I agree with Commissioner Douglas and for the other reasons of the fact that the demands in this department aren't getting smaller, they're growing, and we need more information to be more agile as we navigate through this storm. I mean, it's like taking out your radar while you're driving your, you know, ship in a tropical storm. It's just a bad idea, you know? And I think to the extent that we have all our gauges working properly, it's important for us as decision makers. All right. I'll call for the vote. I'll start with Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Dubut?
Yes.
Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Perush?
Yes.
Lavasser?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, that brings us to item 13, which is the Planning Commission Recommendation on Conditional Rezoning of 305 West 11 Mile Road. Second reading. Mr. Twain, there he is, his pops up there at the top of my screen, just like that, his brand-new office, looking good, Mr. Twain.
Good evening, Mayor, member of the commission. This item was in front of you at your August 10th meeting. You unanimously approved it at that first reading with a revision to address the potential for the drive-through to become a traffic nuisance. That wording was put into the development agreement that's attached to the materials in front of you this evening. It has been executed by the petitioner. It is in front of you for second reading this evening. Generally, those show up on consent agenda when there's a unanimous vote. I don't have anything to add to the presentation. I know the petitioner's online. If you have any questions of me or them, we're here to answer those.
Any questions for Mr. Twain? Any motions? Mr. Perush?
Sorry, I, I'm, I will move approval of this on second reading.
Motion by Commissioner Perush, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. Any discussion? All right, then I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Lavasser?
Yes.
Mr. Perush?
Yes.
Macy?
Yes.
Dubut?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, the motion passes. All right, that brings us to item number 14, which is the Planning Commission Recommendation for Approval of Second Amendment to Final Planned Unit Development Site Plan at 2,300 East 12 Mile Road. Mr. Twain?
This site is on the southwest corner of 12 Mile and Stevenson Highway. As you indicated, it is a second amendment to an existing planned unit development that includes the Kroger store at that location as well as another commercial plaza just west of this outlaw. This is the last outlaw that's at, right at the immediate corner, the southwest corner of Baldwin Stevenson. The petitioner is proposing to amend it to allow for a Panda Express with a drive-through lane. The planning commission did review it and is recommending approval to the commission. The site plan that's presented does meet all ordinance requirements as far as zoning ordinances. So there were no waivers or variances listed in the report. It is, the building itself is approximately 2,300 square feet. The usable square footage is something, something less than that. They're proposing 58 parking spaces on site as well as landscaping around the perimeter. It did, did end up removing nine of the existing trees, but they're putting back, I believe, 23, so they exceed those requirements as well. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Questions for Mr. Twain? Any motions on the?
I believe the petitioner's on the line or as well, if you've got questions, yeah.
Motions? Commissioner Lavasser? You might be on mute, Commissioner Lavasser, can you double click?
My apologies, some people think I'm better that way. I'm gonna move approval of the resolution, but with a caveat, Mr. Gillum and I discussed whether or not there could be any potential issues with the, I've drive-through here. And it doesn't sound like there's likely, but I would like it to be kind of the norm in the same, whenever a drive-through is, is being approved, that we have a provision that provides that, that it'd be considered a nuisance per se if there's a back, if, if the drive-through's causing a backup into our street with the traffic. So the provision would be that, that there'd be a proposed amendment to the planned unit development agreement that basically includes such language, similar to that, to the resolution that we just passed moments, moments ago for the 11 Mile and Woodward development.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lavasser, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubut. Before we start discussion, I'll just confirm, not, not, not that we don't trust you, Commissioner Lavasser, but if Mr. Gillum, I mean, the, the way Commissioner Lavasser read the language, it's gonna be identical to the one we have in there for the previous agenda item. Everything understood copacetic, but the way the motion is, is good to go.
The wording may not be exactly the same, and I'm not sure exactly where it will fit into the planned unit development agreement, but, but I, I mean, I, I understand and, and have no problem with Commissioner Lavasser's intent.
Perfect, good. Okay, all right, any other discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. We'll start with Commissioner Lavasser.
Yes.
Mr. Perush?
Yes.
Macy?
Yes.
Lavarus?
Yes.
Dubut?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. All right, that brings us to item number 15, which is the Downtown Development Authority Recommendation for Lights on West Wall of 11 Mile Parking Garage. Mr. Twain, I assume you're gonna shed some light on this one?
Yes. Commissioners may or may not be aware of the, um, DDA's plans to install decorative colored LED lights in the alley, the segment that runs north-south, just east of Main Street, between 11 Mile and Third Street. The DDA did hire a design firm several months back to come up with a design and work with DTE to try and locate those lights on the existing utility poles. We've also been working to get an agreement with DTE on, to put them on those poles. The design firm, CI Engineering Solutions, recommended to the DDA at the last meeting that they would get better light coverage in the alley, the segment north of Second, between 11 Mile and Second, if the lights were actually placed on the new 11 Miles parking deck. They would, if the commission approves it or authorizes that, because it is a city facility, and that's why it's in front of you this evening before the, it's, it's not a DDA facility, it's not DT, it's obviously the city's facility. So we're, the DDA's recommendation was to award it as, or the construction services and bi-material, subject to the city commission approving the location of those lights on the parking deck. The lights would basically replace the sconce-type lighting that's on the west side of the parking deck, if, if you're familiar with it. They would use the same, same junction boxes for the, for the location. What that does is provide better light coverage in the alley rather than putting them on the DTE utility poles. Some of those poles, DTE has indicated, and our electrician, Motor City Electric, has indicated you can't put the lights on them because of the existing equipment that is on those poles. Placement on, on other ones would require that they be at such an angle, they provided poor lighting in the alley. So anyways, the, the recommendation to the DDA by the consultant was to place them on the deck. And again, what we're really here in front of you is to see if the commission would concur and authorize the placement of those lights on a city facility.
Questions for Mr. Twain? So just to recap, I mean, the decision really centers around, we're the de facto owners of the structure that will have the placement of these lights. Mr. Douglas?
So when the planning commission approved the site plan for this parking deck, I insisted that they wire it to put lights on the western side of the parking structure over the alley. And there were people in that meeting who rolled their eyes at me. I am going to say that I am vindicated and I proudly move approval of this resolution.
We have a motion by Commissioner Douglas, is there a second? A second by Commissioner Dubut? And for the record, I was not one of those individuals that rolled my eyes at Commissioner Douglas. It's very, I can't use a vocabulary word up to her caliber, but very smart about these things and appreciate it. Discussion? All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Lavasser?
Yes.
Mr. Perush?
Sorry, yeah.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Dubut?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Absolutely.
And I vote absolutely as well. All right. That won't be a dark, dank alley anymore, it's gonna be a great spot with, um, some creative, colorful lighting and energy-efficient lighting. And Mr. Phillips, he has his first set of lights in his inventory under the new system, so that's amazing.
Well, we, we still have to get an approval from DTE, so it might be a little bit of time.
All right. No comment. All right, that brings us to item 16, which is the Downtown Development Authority Recommendation on Parking.
Again, the, the DDA, in its role as the city's parking committee, commissioners may recall that under the parking ordinance, the DDA serves in that function. So they did have been discussing parking-related activities for several years as far as the system. As the memo points out, the DDA has provided funding for the months of July and August to have free parking in the decks in the downtown. As the resolution that was passed by the DDA indicates, that was discontinued as of, for the month of September. The remaining part of those, the DDA's recommendation really involved city commission action. The DDA is recommending that the flat fee of $5 or $3, depending on the parking deck, be eliminated or not be reinstituted for some period af- after the 5 o'clock time period. And then the rest follow-up on that, indicating that they recommend that the two hours free that occurs prior to 5 o'clock continue 24/7. Obviously, Sundays wouldn't remain free. After that, after the two hours that are free, the standard rates would apply if you followed the DDA's recommendation. And then the follow-up part was to go back and so passes and permits to the monthly permit requests at the previously established rates. I would point out that the $5 fee, flat rate, or the $3 fee is a significant revenue generator, and there has been some discussion with Mr. Brake and with Julie Rudd about the impact of that on the parking system and its, and the covenants under the revenue bonds that were sold for the deck. So I don't know if Mr. Brake has comments on, on, in regards to that at this point or not. But with that, I will stop. That's the DDA's recommendation.
Mr. Brake, anything to add?
I would say that, from a staff perspective, that we're looking at, at parking and parking revenues from a more comprehensive perspective. So to balance this with making the downtown consumer-friendly, this is a good compromise. So I, I think there'll be some additional recommendations that we will be bringing forward too. So I'm not so concerned of the, of the immediate fiscal implications, as we can make up for that in, in other ways, and I will explain that in detail at a, at another meeting.
Commissioner Lavasser?
Uh, my recollection is if we somehow come up short with parking revenues in the parking fund to pay the bonds, that the DDA is financially backing that. I don't remember if they're the first pocket to pick or if there's other pockets to pick first, but perhaps Mr. Gillum recalls, but sorry to put you on the spot if you don't recall, man.
There was a question that came up in, in the meeting we had the other day as to whether that's the DDA's obligation strictly for one of the parking decks or it's a general obligation. So I, I don't have a firm answer for that. So it's something we're looking at.
Macy?
Yeah, I'm very excited to see this on the agenda today. I know that many of us in the commission have been talking to members of the DDA and the parking subcommittee about how we could adjust this to be very friendly to the downtown and support our downtown businesses. Also, on the library board, this has been a really big issue, since that surface parking lot by the library board is now this garage. And there's a real challenge for people who are coming after 5:00 PM or who were coming after 5:00 PM to the library to have a $5 charge just to visit the library. So we were really, had, had looked into a lot of different options throughout this time, and I just wanna thank Director Dumas and President, President Woodward and Vice President Kolo for really pushing this forward and working with the DDA to figure out if there's a way that we can make this more friendly, especially for our library users. Anyway, I think this is great. I, I guess I would be curious to hear, I mean, I, I understand Mr. Brake is gonna bring something back to us at a future point, but do we have any kind of number for what we think the revenue loss will be for this change?
Well, I think I'll take a first dab at it in talking with the parking systems person and perhaps Chief O'Donoghue who has some more information since he's taken over for the parking operations. I don't have actual numbers in the sense, but the percentage of the flat fee was somewhere in the neighborhood of 50% of the revenues prior to COVID that were being generated. Were generated after that 5 o'clock. Because of COVID, I think everyone anecdotally can see the decks have been pretty empty and it's been free for several months, so I don't have any current numbers. I don't know if Chief O'Donoghue has any more concrete figures?
Mr. Twain, just a quick question on that number, the 50% bogey throughout there of the parking garage revenue or of our entire system revenue?
I believe it's of the entire system.
Chief O'Donoghue's on or wants to add anything?
So, just to follow up to that, so the DDA has been covering this amount for the last few months when parking was free. What was that amount that they were covering?
Well, the DDA simply agreed to provide $100,000. That's not covering the entire amount if you use figures prior to COVID.
Yeah. And, and those numbers are, I imagine, in a static world where, you know, the demand for parking garage revenue remains flat. So for example, right now I see people driving around looking in the city and they're going to try to park anywhere they can to save $5. But if they know the first three in the evening, they may be more inclined to park in the garage, and that could in some way boost up the hourly amount. So keep in mind, the study is not, I don't think it's scientific, I think it's modeled at past data, but doesn't necessarily account future data. The, the other thing that I would add to this conversation that'd be interesting to evaluate for the commissioners to consider, is that clearly the, the DDA and its, its businesses have the propensity to offer free parking out there and all these parking incentives and, I don't want to say gimmicks, that's a bad way to put it, but to attract people and they fund it, they pay for it. You know, with this particular thing, we're coming out of COVID-19, and we're going to, we're going to succeed out of this. Royal Oak is going to rebound and we're going to rebound really strong. And one of the things we're going to need to do is get at least some sort of consistency or some sort of desire for our patrons that come to our town to, to park in the garage and enjoy the garage and maybe even free up more space in the downtown to help, you know, these struggling businesses make up for lost revenues over the past year. So there's some other things there. And if it doesn't work really, really well, we have a strong parking fund. We can always change it again if we, if we find ourselves in trouble. So the good news is we have a very big fund balance, a big, we have a strong fund balance in the, in the parking fund right now that allows us to, to assume some risk. Any other questions? Mr. Prush?
The only thing that I would add to your comments, Mayor Fornia, is that we've been issuing parking bonds for decades. One of our parking structures is pretty darn old, the one that's over on Center Street. And we've been through other economic downturns, significant economic downturns before, where revenues really went down and business activity in the downtown really significantly decreased and parking revenue really, really dropped. And we never defaulted on the bonds. We always found a way to either refinance the bonds or tap into DDA revenues or, or restructure the bonds so that there is no default. So when we were building the new structure, we had heard comments from people saying that, oh, you know, if we ever default, then we're all going to be paying it out of our pocketbooks and out of our, our taxes. Number one, you can't do that the way the bonds are structured. General fund revenue can't bail it out by law, by the way the bonds are structured. And secondly, we've been through economic downturns before, and the parking revenue goes up and the parking revenue goes down with the economic cycles. And through all of those decades, we've never, ever, ever defaulted on any parking bonds for any other structure. So I feel fairly confident that given the amount of oversight that we have now in place, and secondly, the way the DDA is handling and managing the, the payment of the bonds, that we're in, we're in decent shape and that these kinds of changes to the parking rates, which are really, really beneficial to the people who are coming downtown and wanting to spend money downtown, are really a good thing at this point in time.
Very good point, Commissioner Prush. And just on that point that the revenue bonds, I mean, the worst case scenario, let's say something happens, you know, beyond even what we can comprehend now, we hand over the keys of the parking garage to the bank. It doesn't come out of our general fund. We insulated ourselves from that, as Commissioner Prush stated. What's a bank going to do with a large parking garage or a couple parking garages? They're, they're going to figure it out with us if, you know, something really, really egregious happens beyond anything we've seen over the past decades, like Commissioner Prush said. Okay. All right, so I don't think there's a motion on the table. Commissioner Lavasser?
I'll move adoption of the resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Lavasser, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubach? Discussion? Commissioner Dubach, did you raise your hand, or is that just an inadvertent movement? I got hawk eyes tonight, so I must have just saw your arm move. All right, I'll call for the vote. We'll start with Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Commissioner Dubach?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Prush?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavasser?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And thank you to the DDA and the leadership of the DDA and all the downtown businesses that took part in this conversation. I think this is going to be very interesting for the, the future of our downtown, and I think it's going to be something that, you know, will benefit our community as a whole. So thank you for taking it up and making the brave recommendation. Okay, that brings us to the approval of extension of COVID-19 temporary use permits.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. What is presented to your consideration? We're revisiting a topic that was approved at a city commission back in early June that allows cafes and other businesses to have an outdoor offering. Recently, the Michigan Liquor Control Commission has extended the canyon outdoor use an additional amount of time through the, the end of November. So presenting this to you, it's, it's a complement to the next issue having to do with the extending the closure of Fifth Street that's interrelated. I presented a date to you that's consistent with that extension, April 30th, but if the commission wishes to just make that consistent with the Liquor Control Commission of an additional 30 days, then we can evaluate that as, as time goes on. But this is presented for your consideration. Like I said, it's, is the businesses are trying to cope with looking at other ways that they can provide these social outlets and continue their business operations during the winter months through some creative ideas. This is, we, we need to address this timeline issue of how far out do we want to extend the existing permits? And defer if there's very specific questions about the, the individual permits to Director Twain that can answer that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Brake. Any questions for Mr. Brake at this point? Okay, I'm scanning, and I don't see any questions. Thoughts, motions, discussion? Commissioner Dubach?
Yeah, I'd just say it's been, I know, trying time for local business owners, seen a lot of creativity, a lot of folks trying to make the best of a bad situation. This has been a good tool for them, so I'll move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Dubach, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. All right, discussion. Just echo Commissioner Dubach's comments, I think this is good. We got to unlock every tool to help our hardworking, especially small business owners be successful. And certainly this is going to be a tool down the road when we can, you know, exit the situation permanently. I saw Mr. Twain with his hand up. Mr. Twain, unless you're saying hi, I imagine you have something to say?
Well, I just, for clarity's sake, we treated, the commission treated sidewalk cafes differently than the COVID-19 permits. I guess my question is, are we extending sidewalk cafes as well as the COVID-19 permits? Because they were treated differently. The COVID-19 permits were primarily going out into the public street or on private property. The sidewalk cafes are the standard cafes that have gone out for years under a license agreement. Under those license agreements, those all end on October 31st as well. So I'm just looking for clarity. The resolution references COVID-19 temporary use permits through April 30th. But anyways, that's my question.
So thank Commissioner Dubach for clarity. If, if there's a desire to put an amendment on there for all sidewalk cafes, I think that would bring more clarity. I think that's what Mr. Twain's saying. We decide to go down that path?
Okay. I mean, that seems to be in the spirit of what we're trying to do here, right? Is there a reason that we would not do that?
All right, Commissioner Prush?
The only reason that I think there might be for not doing that, I can just picture snow plowing in the sidewalks if we extend the sidewalk cafes all the way through to April. I guess, I certainly wouldn't have any problem with that, but I guess I would like to hear the DD, the DDA board's feedback on that, just in terms of how they would handle that, because there's a whole lot more sidewalk cafes than there are COVID permitted areas. And I think that might negatively impact the snow plowing. So I guess I would like to get their reaction first before we include the sidewalk cafe extension.
The, the, snow plowing's actually done by DPS. I don't know if Aaron's could make comment on it, but the, the DDA simply pays for the time that the DPS personnel uses to remove snow from the sidewalks. So maybe, maybe Aaron can address this snow removal.
Okay, that's fair.
Mr. Filipski, are you still on?
Yes, yes, I am. Yeah, no, that should not be a problem from DPS's point of view. As you noted, we, we charge for the, the time we spend doing it, so it might take a little bit more time, but otherwise, no issues.
Okay, thanks.
Lavasser?
Do we need a motion to amend the motion, or can we simply have the first and second make that, make that clarification?
I asked Mr. Gillum that question. Mr. Gillum, what's your preference?
I'm under the circumstance, I think if there's just clarification from the maker of the motion and the supporter.
Maker and, maker and seconder?
So that is my intent.
Okay, seconder? Who just seconded the motion, was it? First Commissioner, do we lose?
Commissioner Douglas, I believe.
Yeah, we lost her.
I'm here.
Okay, there you are.
I second the motion.
Okay, good. All right, clarity now. Clarity now, kind of like serenity now, we have clarity now. All right, okay, any other discussion? Commissioner Douglas?
I just want to add that particularly in the spring, but in the fall as well. I mean, if, if you go to Europe, people are standing around at sidewalk, on a nice day, people stand around at sidewalk cafes wearing, you know, coats and hats and scarves. So, and particularly in the spring, if we get some nice days in March and April, this will enable the COVID establishments and other sidewalk cafes to open up a little sooner, and I think that's going to be a beneficial thing.
I just think in general, COVID aside, I mean, Royal Oak is really a destination where, you know, I think we want to cultivate that culture of its place to be, right? So, you know, if people think, nice day, warm day, let's go to Royal Oak. There'll be a lot of places to sit outside, whether that happens, you know, earlier or later in the year. I think having that option on the table for businesses, you know, not only assist during the pandemic, but also helps, I think, in general, just, and it helps overall with the, the attractiveness of our community, where we want to be a place, you know, for people to go, not just a collection of businesses that people want to visit. Commissioner Prush?
Also, I think it's, it's my understanding, because I've heard it from some of the downtown businesses, that they're planning on making even more significant investment in the, the facilities that they already have in place. The structures out into the parking spaces, tents in certain areas. They're also considering adding, because it's going to go into the fall, heaters and other things to make it more amenable so that you can sit outside. So they're going to be spending some more money to expand that area, to expand the usability of those areas. So if we extend this thing, both the sidewalk cafes as, as well as the, the COVID processes all the way through the winter into the spring, it'll give them much more opportunity to kind of recoup those investments. And maybe we'll have even more that would apply for using the, the parking spaces and so on, if they know that they would have a longer period of time to recoup the investment that they would have to put into it. So I, I think it's a good move altogether to, to do it this way.
Excellent point, Commissioner Prush. All right, I'll call for the vote. We'll start with Commissioner Dubach.
Yes.
Macy?
Yes.
Prush?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavasser?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right. That brings us to item 18, which is the authorization to extend Fifth Street closure. Mr. Brake?
Oh, sorry, I was muted. So like the, the previous issue, this is very specific to the temporary closure of Fifth Street, a recommendation. Have that continue along that, that same timeframe through the end of April next year. There are a few businesses that have made a significant investment on the outdoor docks and like, and otherwise absent having this extension, they would need to remove those items by the end of October. So again, this gives us the ability of exploring perhaps some creative other approaches to, if there is a allowable, some sort of temporary structure or, or whatever that would allow the businesses to continue those type of operations even in the cooler months, and still allow that, with social distancing and like, and really a win-win for the businesses as, as well as patrons and residents.
Questions for Mr. Brake? Commissioner Dubach?
I know when we first said we were willing to do this, consider street closures and things, you know, we talked much about Fifth Street, but several others, and we had said, you know, we weren't going to mandate it, we're going to wait for businesses to come forward and say this is something they thought would be helpful. So I'm just curious, have we, I, I've seen this is, is very successful on Fifth Street and allowing folks to have the space to be out and safely distance. Have there not been inquiries from other businesses? There doesn't seem to be interest from others on other streets in the city?
Oh, outside of Fifth Street? I, I think the, the only interest that there was the, oh, use of the parking spaces along Main, but as far as closure of other streets, I'm not aware of that, but I'll, I'll defer to Director Twain if there has been, but, you know, Fifth Street has really been the more popular one. And incidentally, those businesses, they're, they're the ones really initiating the ask to the consideration of the extension.
Okay. Because I definitely just wanted on the record that we've made this something we're willing to consider in other areas, because I keep getting lit up on social media and just by friends socially saying, why haven't you closed Main Street? Look at this cool city did it, and this cool city did it. Like we don't, we didn't want to mandate it. If businesses wanted, we'd consider it, so.
Yeah, there wasn't enough of a push on Main Street, so that's why.
Okay.
I would concur. We've simply reacted to the request that came in under the COVID-19 permit. I don't believe we've rejected any. We've modified some, but we've only reacted to those that came in.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Brake or Mr. Twain? Discussion or motions? Commissioner Dubach?
As I see Mr. Yazbek here, does he want to speak to how this is helpful and the caution that they're able to take in order to keep people safe?
Mr. Yazbek, if you're, if you're on, maybe I'm out of space here on my screen.
I am on, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Wonderful. Good evening, everyone. It's very nice to see you. It's been too long. Yes, I'm picking up on that thought process there. We are very interested in closing Fifth Street because, coming to you from upstairs at Fifth Avenue, I was just doing some dusting here. It's been a tough road. We haven't been open inside since July 1st. And as noted, we built a significant structure in the street to try to, you know, I guess, navigate what, what these these conditions are in our country these days. And it's been pretty successful. It's been well received. Everybody loves the idea of the Fifth Street closure so far. There's something, I think patios around town and the things that the small businesses have done have resonated very well with the community. And it's good to see, because this, you know, it's been very tough. Our particular patio and O'Toole's patio café, De Marquis patio, they're working very well. And it's the nature of Fifth Street. I don't think we really need, I don't think the city needs Fifth Street as a thoroughfare. I don't think it ever did. I think necessity being the mother of invention, I think now with no ability to use the inside, we see how valuable the closure of Fifth Street can be for, and I will say, it's not just for the businesses on Fifth Street. Whether you're a fan of Fifth Street or not a fan of Fifth Street, I don't think you can mount much of an argument that Fifth Street isn't the catalyst to the entire, you know, entertainment district of downtown Royal Oak. Losing Hop Cat was a big blow, not just to Fifth Street, but for the whole downtown, because it was definitely a big draw for downtown Royal Oak, a big draw for people. So having a closed Fifth Street and the beginning of a pedestrian, maybe walkway that ultimately, you know, goes a little bit further, you know, I think it's a broader question to connect Fifth Street ultimately with maybe the new park. I know that we're already on the DDA level. We've funded some construction for the alleyway behind Mr. Bee's and adjacent to the Henry Ford Hospital. And it's going to be a very cool alleyway, paver. It's really taking shape and it's really looking nice. But that's a, you know, a question for down the road. But I think immediately, yes, it's very important to, for us and for Fifth Street, the businesses on Fifth Street, to have this closure and continue to draw people to downtown Royal Oak that then patronize all the businesses in downtown. It's not just the businesses on Fifth Street.
Mr. Yazbek, any questions for Mr. Yazbek? Well, there's a proposal that's been put in front of us.
I'll move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Dubak. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Prush. Discussion? You know, the only thing I'll add is, we had, I think, pretty much the entire inventory of businesses on Fifth Street call in to support this, in terms of helping their business, but also creating a little spark in an area of our downtown that, you know, will hopefully have overflow opportunity for other surrounding businesses on Washington and Main, et cetera. And I just encourage the city staff, as we go on, to look to the Arts Commission and look to, you know, our engineering department and for Green Infrastructure, all these things down the road, that if this is going to be a real permanent thing, that we should probably coordinate a, almost like a beautification opportunity to not only make it useful for restaurant service, but a place, a destination where people, you know, a non-missed spot on the map of Royal Oak, when you come to downtown, you can walk by and see something, some art or something like that, and just make it a draw, you know, 24 hours a day for the community, not just during, you know, popular restaurant service hours. So that would be my encouragement. But all for future discussions. So I'll call for the vote. Oh, Commissioner Macy, I can only see half your hand. I basically see your thumb. So, sorry, I almost missed you there.
I was just going to add on to that, Mayor, that I totally agree, and I would love to see Fifth Street have lights strung up as we get closer to the winter season. I think if it's going to be a closed pedestrian, there's a lot of opportunity there to make it a really beautiful spot for when it gets colder.
And people come to downtown. We've had those winter festivals before, and they, you know, drink cocoa and enjoy food and hang around, you know, the lights and everything. So your remark is really pointed. All right. We'll start with Commissioner Levaser.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Prush?
Yes.
Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Dubak?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Twing. Thank you, Mr. Yazbek, for joining and expressing your thoughts on the topic, both as a DDA member and an affected business on Fifth Street, and wish you continued luck during this pandemic, as well as every other business in our community.
Thank you very much.
This brings us to item 19, the final item on today's discussion of the process to fill City Commissioner Davis' vacant seat, as requested by Mayor Partem Prush, Commissioner Douglas, and Commissioner. Anyone who wants this conversation, I was Commissioner Prush.
Yes. Mayor Fornier, before we get to that, an apology to all of you. This item was not on the agenda, not this application issue or the replacement of the city commissioners. This is new. This came into the staff over the course of the last week, and it's not on the agenda, because the staff wanted to keep it secret from you, Mayor Fornier. But earlier this week, they received a letter from the Oakland County Executive congratulating you and thanking you for serving on the COVID-19 Economic Recovery Task Force. And they sent to City Hall this wonderful, heavy plaque congratulating you and thanking you, but also wanting the community to understand that this economic task force led to, during this pandemic recovery period, the creation of 15,000 recovery kits for businesses, nonprofits, religious institutions, and others, providing you with vital safety equipment, including masks and thermometers and all of that kind of stuff, information to reopen safely, several small business grants targeted at stabilization, PPP, resilience, and recovery, and also $10 million allocated from the Federal Cares Act Fund, which came through the county, to provide grants for nonprofit organizations severely impacted by the pandemic, and $30 million to assist our local governments. So I just wanted to, on behalf of the staff who received this letter, congratulate you, Mayor Fornier, for serving Oakland County on this recovery task force. I know it took extra time out of your calendar, which is never, never easy for any of us. But we created, and the rest of the members of the task force, created very good results from this. A lot of people benefited from it. So congratulations. And I will deliver the very heavy, but very attractive plaque to you at some point very soon. So congratulations.
Well, you know, I don't like secrets, you guys. I don't like surprises. But thank you very much. And, you know, I think, you know, I'm honored and I felt privileged and I was, you know, very happy that I was able to serve on that task force and not just represent cities and communities and government, but also represent the city of Royal Oak and bring our needs and conversations to the table. And I really have to give, I mean, the thanks for us, I mean, this is our job, this is what we sign up to do, to serve and to make sure our communities are better off, especially in some of the most challenging times. But I got to tell you, it was a great privilege and honor. The people I served with on that board came from many different backgrounds, both from private industry, public sector, and the degree of professionalism, the sense of urgency, I mean, rivaled anything you'll see in the private sector. The leadership of Dave Coulter, former mayor, neighbor to the South, you know, he was, I don't want to say he was relentless, but he pushed our team, along with his staff, to make sure that we came up with the ideas and the plans necessary to help us navigate, you know, to the best that we can with the tools that we have, this pandemic from a county's perspective. And I think, you know, the appreciation really goes to the entire team. And I have to tell you, we had great debate. Everything was very positive in nature, and I'm honored to be honored, I guess. I never, I kind of signed up quietly to put, you know, our community and the cities of southeast Oakland County in the forefront, in the conversation. So it's, I think, you know, we reflect back years from now, the things we did right and the things we did wrong as a nation, as a country, as a county, as a community. I think this is one of the things that, through the county, through the leadership of Dave Coulter and Chairman Woodward and the other county, Mike Gindel was on there as well. I think we're going to look to it and say, we did a pretty darn good job, and we brought some minds together to get results. So, wow, I am shocked and surprised, but thank you very much. This is a pleasant thing to, pleasant news to get. So I'm humbled. Thank you. And Pat, I'll remember that you surprised me. I don't forget.
That's okay. You can get that to me. I can go on with the next item on the agenda if that material would confirm.
Commissioner Prush?
Okay. I put this on the agenda because despite the fact that we're all saddened by the death of Commissioner Gibbs, we can't avoid our responsibility under the charter, and that is to appoint a replacement for her seat. As all of you understand, whoever is appointed to fill her seat would have to stand for reelection next year at the municipal election in 2021. That would be the case even if there were additional years left in her term. For example, if I had resigned and my seat was vacant, and my term isn't over until 2023, the rest of the commission would fill that vacancy, and that person still would have to run for the remainder of their term in next year in 2021. They wouldn't have an opportunity to fill out the remaining three years of my term. So there will be an election to fill this seat, remaining this seat, 2021. But it happens to be the year that Commissioner Gibbs' term was going to expire. So whoever runs next year, if they are successful, they would, they would win a full four-year term. The charter does not specify how the city commissioner is to fill this vacancy. And that pretty much follows the language that is in the Home Roads Cities Act, which is the enabling legislation that was passed by the state of Michigan a long, long time ago, that pretty much determines how our charter is structured and how we operate, especially in a community like ours. We don't have a strong mayor who is elected, or city councils who are full-time positions. We are part-time policymakers, and vacancies in positions on our commission operate slightly differently and have different impacts than a vacancy in, for example, in the city of Detroit or another community which has city council members by wards or districts, where they actually represented a specific district. In those cities, I believe, a special election is called for in most communities. But that's not the case in cities where you have what is called a weak mayor form of government, where you don't have a strong mayor executive, and you have a city manager. And cities are pretty much left to their own devices as to exactly how they go about appointing someone and develop procedures for that. And Royal Oak over the years has done a number of different things. There's been a number of city commissioners that have either had to leave, or unfortunately, like Commissioner Gibbs, or many decades ago, like Commissioner Fred Cooper died in office, and those offices had to be filled, and those vacancies had to be filled for the remainder of their terms. My personal preference given going forward is to use an application process, to use basically the application that we use for wards and commissions. We have heard individually from various members of the committee who have expressed an interest in perhaps being considered. They're not mounting a full-blown campaign like someone else is, but on the other hand, there are a number of people who are interested in being considered for this position. So I thought perhaps the fairest and the most transparent way to handle this would be to have an application process, so that people who are interested can fill out the application, essentially the same application that we use for wards and commissions, with perhaps a couple of additional questions. And I know that Commissioner Douglas has suggested a couple of additional questions, and that we have, we conduct it with a very, very short timeframe. We open the application process for the next 10 days. We see those applications in front of us for the next commission meeting. We go through them individually. We pick out one or two or top candidates. We come back at the next commission meeting at the end of September, and we make a decision. We don't let this process drag on. We don't go into a whole interview process, like we do with the city manager position. But we do consider various applicants and make an informed decision based upon the qualifications of the potential applications. And that would give everyone who's interested an opportunity. I want to speak real briefly to the campaign that Pam Lindell has been mounting for this position. It's been quite an aggressive campaign. It started out with just a lot of Facebook comments saying, oh, you know, she was the top vote getter against the non-incumbents and so on and so forth, and she should be considered. Then it morphed into a more aggressive campaign, which we heard the results of tonight, of people on Facebook suggesting that they call the commission and lobby for her to be appointed. In the course of this meeting tonight, I got an email from WXYZ Talk, and he was saying, oh, we understand that you're going to be making appointment to the city commission tonight. Can you let us know what's going on? And we're having trouble accessing the audio from your, from your, from your meeting. Please keep us informed as to what is going on. So clearly, someone is also reaching out into the media to get them involved in this lobbying campaign. But in terms of my position on this issue, Ms. Lindell ran last year. She did not win. The voters did not pick her. She came in fourth out of six. To me, that's not a huge vote of confidence. If the voters really wanted her in this position, I think they would have put her in this position, but they didn't. And then since then, since then, we have learned that the Oakland County Republican Party has put her on the ballot for the Oakland County Commission seat, which Commissioner Gibbs was going to be running for, had she not died, this coming fall. So unfortunately, that fact was not mentioned by any of the people who called in this evening. But by potentially putting her into this office, it would give her a huge amount of publicity for her campaign for the Oakland County Board of Commissioners. And I have a real, real serious ethical problems with that whole scenario. She's out there, she has signs, county commission signs, she has a county commissioner website, campaign website up and running. She clearly is running for county commission, but yet she received, we all received, it's passed this week, an email from her saying she would like to be considered for the city commission position. I find that whole, that whole scenario, when you put all those factors together, ethically, really, really, really troublesome. So Ms. Lindell was free to submit an application with everybody else, but I for one will not seriously consider her, because she's running for county commission. And if that's what she's chosen to do, then that's what she shouldn't do. So that's my proposal, was that we have an application process. And I'll stop now.
Thank you, Commissioner Prush. Any other comments or discussion about the process to fill the city commission vacancy left by Commissioner Gibbs? Oh, Commissioner Douglas. Sorry, the Hawkeyes weren't as sharp this time.
Thank you, Mayor. So I suggested, and the city attorney on my behalf emailed some suggestions to the, our fellow commissioners, this would be easier if we were all in person and had a slide that we could display. But at any rate, what I've suggested is that the application process include all of the standard, all of the questions from the city's standard committee board task force application process. First name, address, contact information. It asks people the reason for their application, and I would suggest that we expand that to say, why do you want to be appointed to the city commission? I also propose adding two questions. What are Royal Oak's three greatest challenges in the coming one to five years? And what three things are most important for the long-term benefit of our residents? I think the first question will elicit responses from people who follow what the city is doing, who are aware of our budgetary issues or any other issues that we're facing. And the second question, I think, lets us hear what people's vision is for the city and to see how compatible that is with what we, as a group or as individuals, believe is the appropriate direction for the city.
Mr. Douglas, I'm sure that was a very well-put point. Unfortunately for me, I just got booted off right in the middle of the, from your introduction, and then I heard your closing.
It was brilliant. I.
Could you, for my, and I apologize to the others for my own advocacy, could you summarize the middle part of it, please, for me, since I was kicked off the internet here?
I can't remember what the. I can't remember what the middle part is. Basically, it's the city's standard application process with questions about what people, what applicants feel is, are the city's three greatest challenges in the coming one to five years? And what three things are most important to, they think are most important to the long-term benefit of our residents.
Okay. So the application process with those additional questions. Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Oh, Commissioner Levasseur.
This may already be incorporated into it, but I want to make sure that we have a question that's open-ended enough so that the applicants have the pre-rent to provide whatever they believe is most important and and not feel boxed in by very specific questions.
So if I may continue, if you look back, if you look at the standard application, there are a couple of open-ended possibilities. One is obviously the reason, why do you want to be appointed to the city commission? And the other is qualifications and community activities, which can cover the waterfront in terms of what people's done, what people have done in the community, what their interests are. I think people will feel free to say whatever they want to say.
I think that first question's pretty important. I mean, why? I mean, especially in today's age where things are getting tougher and tougher and more divided and, you know, we sit here a public comment and we hear things all the time, personal attacks and, you know, everybody questioning every decision. There's zero chance you're going to make 100% of the people happy 100% of the time. And, you know, it's a challenge doing this job. It's a volunteer job for $20 a meeting for a commissioner and the mayor gets 40. And you know, we probably spend more than that in miles on our cars and toner in our printer. So I think that's an important question for me. I mean, I think we really want to seek out people that, you know, are looking for that opportunity to make meaningful change. Commissioner Macy.
Yeah, I just want to, to Commissioner Levasseur's point, so I think that question also about why do you want to be appointed to the commission? I'm not sure what the character limit is on the online application, but I would suggest that we make it a lot bigger or perhaps allow them to attach another document. In case, I mean, it feels like a page or so would be a good length for, for an open-ended question if they had lots of things to say.
Great point. Anybody else? So I do think an application process, and just in my opinion, is the right way to go here. I think that we don't want to bias a jury or come to any foregone conclusions. I think what we want to do is see who applies and see what they have to say and see what they can contribute. I mean, all of us up here, all the six of us remaining were elected at large by the community. And, you know, the community understands that we have difficult decisions to make, and sometimes that means appointing people to fill roles that become vacant. Sometimes, you know, for various reasons like we have here today. And I think that we should at least start the process and have the application. I like the suggestions made about, you know, making the application a little bit more robust, considering the position. And, you know, from there, take a look at everybody. Commissioner Dubac.
So this will be the fourth time we've filled a seat that I've been sitting at the table. And each time, it's been a little bit different. But several, I think actually each of the times, we had kind of just looked at the pool, previous elected, saying, well, these people have had the vote of confidence from the city multiple times, where it's known when they get ground running. I think that's a reasonable way to go about it, but I also think we know that there's a lot of talent out there. We know there's a lot of folks that want to serve. And I think there's value in looking at someone, you know, who aspires to sit at the table and then be held accountable by the voters who hasn't yet had that experience. So I'm, I'm definitely, you know, I think this is, this is a good path to go down. I'm definitely interested, you know, in someone who's going to be able to hit the ground running, who understands. I would hope that these questions get at folks kind of knowing some of the workings of how the city operates, some basic understanding of the city budget. And, you know, not, you know, like online fanfiction, but real nuts and bolts of what we do here in policymaking. And I think we need to have a pretty solid deadline that gives us enough time to review the applications that come in. So I would propose that we say by 5:00 PM next Monday, and then that would give us a week to review and assess the applications that come in. I'm not saying anyone thinks that's unreasonable, but I feel like, so we announce tonight, make sure the word is out tomorrow. Folks got a week to put their application together, that we have a week to review before we come together at the following year.
And I mean, keep in mind, we're talking about the simple application form. We're not asking for a portfolio presentation that's, you know, graphicked and dotted and, you know, Ts crossed and all of that stuff. I mean, it's the, you know, the application process. You know, I don't want to say it's, it's easy or it should take five minutes, but certainly people, they're interested, can find some quality time between now and then to complete it. And then, you know, what's important is that we have time to look at it and kind of sort through it and talk about the applicants as a commission. Any other discussion? Motions? Okay, Commissioner Perush.
Just let me make sure that I include everything that we shouldn't include. I will move that we request applications for the vacant seat on the city commission on a form provided by the city, which is the basic application form that we've been using for boards and committees with the three additional questions that Commissioner Douglas suggested with a deadline to receive them at City Hall either by mail or drop-off or email by 5:00 o'clock next Monday, August 21st.
September 21st. And now, and that maybe Commissioner Perush is one thing, not to interject in motion, but also the, I think Commissioner Macy had a suggestion as well on the length of the, to be one page, to allow for at least a page on the, why do you want to apply? Question.
Yes, that's a very good point. And I will make that a friendly amendment to my motion, if everyone is happy with that, to allow, make sure that the application indicates that if you want to attach additional information or additional, an additional page, maybe not pages, but an additional page, that would be fine. And I see a note from Ms. Alice that she will have the application revised by tomorrow, sometime tomorrow.
The motion by Commissioner Perush, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas with the two thumbs up. All right, discussion on this motion. All right, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Levasseur.
Are you asking for the vote?
Yeah.
I'll vote yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Dubac?
Yes.
Mr. Perush?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, so we'll get that out there and people will start applying and we'll take the next step at our next meeting, see what the application shake out to be, and hopefully we get applications. You know, so that will be good. All right. That brings us to the end of our scheduled meeting. Notwithstanding anything else, for the betterment of our fellow citizens, I'll undertake a motion to by Commissioner Dubac. Is there a second? Is there a second? Anyone want to leave? Second by Commissioner Levasseur. Any discussion on this motion? All right, I'll call for the vote. Mr. Perush?
Yes.
Mr. Dubac?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Levasseur?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Where are you? Good night, everyone. Thank you for all your participation tonight. Thank you to staff. Thank you to the folks tuning in. Really appreciate your time. I understand there might have been some issues with Xfinity out there. Remember, this has been recorded and it will be up as soon as humanly possible to, for our constituents to review if they happen to have technical issues with their provider. So good night, everyone. Stay safe, stay healthy, and we'll see you again on the 28th.